18, 2020 to order. Public hearing of 6:50. Unfortunately, it's 7:05, a little bit late, of the conveyance of town-owned property. I want to read the rules. February 18, 2020. Public hearing, ground rules of public hearing has been scheduled to allow the interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinion regarding the proposed conveyance of Two Broadbrook Road. Roll call, please.
Counselor Basco?
Here.
Counselor Sikala?
Here.
Counselor Hamler?
Here.
Counselor Kiner?
Here.
Mayor Ludwig?
Here.
Counselor Mangini?
Here.
Counselor Mueller?
Here.
Counselor Riley?
Here.
Counselor Sfaraza?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zuzak?
Here.
Counselor Ungary?
Here.
There are 11 present and non-absent.
The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current Friday, February 7, 2020. Town of Enfield legal notice. The Town of Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall, Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Tuesday, February 18 at 7:05 PM to allow all interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the proposed conveyance of Two Broadbrook Road. For more information, please contact Nelson Tereso at our Deputy Director of Economic Development of 860-253-6391. Submitted by Susan Olnicki, Town Clerk, dated on February 4, 2020. Ground rules for the public hearing, there is no time limit, but we ask each person not to take up too much time so that everyone have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires as one chance to speak, I shall permit, we shall permit those individuals who desire a second chance. After those individuals desire a second chance, we shall permit individuals for a third, fourth, et cetera. Please refrain from personalities in the notices in the public hearing from Hartford Current. Is there anyone who would like to specifically speak on this public hearing at this time?
Would you like me to just give a little thumbnail background so people understand what the property is about? The Grange was the former Skidico Village Schoolhouse, built in 1850. Over the years, it was owned by the Enfield Grange, used as a meeting hall. It's been vacant since the town acquired the property in 2010. The town attempted to convey the property to the Martha Parsons Trust, but the group dissolved and is no longer in existence. The town solicited an RFP for parties interested in acquiring it in 2015. There was only one offer of $20,000, but they were unable to ultimately secure financing. The deal fell through. So, the reason for this public hearing is to notice that we would like to convey it, give it to our town realtor, Century 21 All Points, it's residentially zoned, R33, and put it on the market. They're recommending at the price of 75,000 to 80,000, so everybody knows what we're doing. And I will just tell you also, Nelson's on vacation this week, but Planning and Zoning had it for the referral that statutorily required. They tabled it. My understanding from staff is they would like to see it retained as that building so that if we were to sell it, we would put a restricted covenant through the town attorney to limit it to, I guess, an adaptive reuse or to renovate it. So, that's something, you don't need to address it tonight. That was one of their requests, I believe. We can consider it, and you can decide that when ultimately we put it on the market. Is that something you agree with? And we can include it and have the town attorney put that in, have the realtor put it in the listing so people know. And that's what it is.
Would anyone in the public like to speak specifically on this issue? Would anyone? Karen.
Karen LaPlante, 166 North Maple Street. I believe a restrictive covenant or a conservation easement of some type to keep the exterior in its historic state, you know, basically, you know, not the peeling siding and the boards that are on it at this point, but what it was like originally would be a really good thing to do. I know if Margaret were here, she would want it saved. She went to that school, and many of our grandparents and great-grandparents probably went there. So, whatever we can do to keep the historic area there in Skidico would be, would be good, instead of seeing a CVS go up or something. So, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Jack.
Jack Sheridan, 7th Buchanan Road. When you first read that, Margaret Zinniak was shaking my chair, saying, "Get up and say something." She went to school there. She had a lot of pride about that building. And for a time, there were people that didn't know the history of that building, and she brought that to light. And so, I think it would be great if it was preserved in some way. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, Jack. Thank you to Margaret as well. Anyone else like speaking specifically in this public hearing? For the first time? For the second time? Karen or Jack? Anyone else? Last call. Hearing none, declared as public hearing closed. Thank you, everyone. We move on to the regular meeting of Tuesday, February 18, 2020. We are starting to meet at 7:11 Eastern Standard Time. Prayer, Counselor Mangini.
Lord, as we conduct our business tonight, we ask for your guidance. Help us to make decisions on issues that will benefit our community. We also ask, Lord, to give us the strength and fortitude necessary to respect different points of view. Amen.
Flagpole. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, roll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Here.
Counselor Mueller?
Here.
Counselor Riley?
Here.
Counselor Sfaraza?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zuzak?
Here.
Counselor Ungary?
Here.
Counselor Basco?
Here.
Counselor Sikala?
Here.
Counselor Hamler?
Here.
Counselor Kiner?
Here.
Mayor Ludwig?
Here.
There are 11 present and non-absent.
Moving on to item four in the agenda, fire evacuation announcement. In case of a fire, again, we have exit doors in the back of the hall. Please go orderly to your left or right, or doors to our left, the audience is right. Please go out those doors, the first doors that you see, go down the stairs, and out the doors into the parking lot in an orderly fashion in case of a fire. Moving on to item five, minutes of preceding meetings. The special meeting, February 3, 2020, do have a motion to approve by Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Mangini. Is there any additions, deletions, changes, omissions? Hearing none by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 11 in favor, zero against. Moving on to the regular meeting of February 3, 2020, do have a motion to approve by Counselor Mangini, seconded by Counselor Mueller. Is there any additions, deletions, changes to the minutes? Hearing none by show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions? 11 in favor, zero against. We now move to item six, our special guest. Again, Della Froman, are I saying it right? From our Tax Department.
And John Wilcox, Finance Director.
John Wilcox, our Director of Finance. Here to talk about the elderly tax credit. Welcome, guys. When you're ready, name and title, and then. Thank you for coming.
Just plugged in. I'm Della Froman, Supervisor for Assessment and Revenue Collection.
I'm John Wilcox. I'm the Town Finance Director. Catch up here. Okay. Just a quick presentation on the Homeowner Circuit Breaker Program. The Circuit Breaker Program is a state-mandated program, and it's administered through credits to property taxes. The town has a local ordinance which matches the credits issued by the state program. This fiscal year, fiscal year 2020, we have assisted 500 residents, and the cost of the state program was $302,979. The local match is $301,608. The credit amounts are set by the state and range from $150 to $1,250, and these credits are matched by the state program, so a resident will see on their tax bill a state benefit and a local benefit. The reason for the difference is the amount of taxes due don't always generate enough for the, for the second one. I'll turn it over to Della to go over the program requirements.
Okay. To begin with, you have to own the property and be 65 years of age at the time of filing. In other words, you have to have turned 65 by December 31, 2019, to apply for this credit on the 2019 grant list, or your July 2020 billing. Then, it's set by income limits by State Office of Policy and Management for this year for filing between February 1 and May 15. For married is $45,100, and $37,000 for a single person. Do you have other requirements? You need to own the home in which you are applying for on October 1, 2019, and it has to be your primary residence. This is acknowledgement that, yes, some people do head to warmer weather in the winter, but it still has to be your primary residence here in Enfield or anywhere in Connecticut that the town you're applying for. And again, the filing period is February 1 to May 15, and if, in fact, you are reapplying, we will notify you that it's time to reapply. We don't just hang it out there and hope you remember. We will send you a letter. We don't hear from you. We will send you a certified letter. We still don't hear from you, we pick up the phone and call you. We do everything we can to make sure that we've reached out to all of our taxpayers that are eligible. Applications are taken through what was known as Neighborhood Services. They're calling themselves Community Services now. They're still at the same location at 110 High Street, and you do need to call for an appointment. The number is on our website. It's here on the screen at 860-253-6397. And again, when you file with the application, you need to make sure that you, if you file a tax return, you're 1040 with the IRS, we will need a copy of it. Bring in yours, we will copy it for you. And your Social Security Form 1099, that's your final statement from Social Security for your prior year. If you do not file a tax return, we still need the same information. We're going to need that Social Security 1099. We're going to need your pension statement, which is your Form W2P or 1099R. We need your income statement, your 1099R interest. You're going to need your dividend statement, again, the 1099, and any other income, such as lottery, rental income, et cetera. You still have to report all of your income. If, in fact, the property is in a trust, we will need a copy of that trust document. Things have changed in the last year. It was signed in July this past summer, where, in fact, they changed a little of the requirements at OPM level for your trust. Those people that were denied last year because they had an irrevocable trust are getting letters that you might be eligible this year to come on, give us a call. There were about nine, I believe, so we're reaching out to them, because they have changed that. And again, if you are under 65, you're still eligible if you are Social Security Disabled, 100%. You do need to make sure you bring in your award certificate, or make sure it has been filed with the Assessor's Office to be able to be eligible for the program if you are under 65 years of age. This is our town website. It's real simple to be able to find out all about our exemption programs. This is the homepage. You're going to go to Departments, and from Departments, you're going to go to Tax Department, where it's got Assessment and Revenue Collection. And from there, you're very simply going to scroll down to where you see the Assessment, and it says exemptions. There's some detailed information of each of the individual programs. The Homeowner or Circuit Program is the very first one. If you think you're eligible for other programs, the information and applications are also available on that page. That would be for blind, immulatory vehicles, veterans, additional, low income. This is the application, what it looks like for the elderly tax credits. If, in fact, you got it in the mail for us, you'll see that we also populated all of your general information, your name, your address, so it makes it a little bit easier to read when it's filing time. That's it. And again, there's the number to call for an appointment to get on this program for the elderly and the Social Security Disabled for a tax credit.
Thank you, very good. Deputy Mayor Zuzak?
So, it's only purely income-based? It's not asset-based at all?
Not asset-based. It is your adjusted gross income and Social Security.
All right. So, basically, they could have assets, like you said, they can have a second home, but still qualify here.
Yes. But if it's a rental income, they need to report that rental income.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sfaraza, Counselor Riley, then.
So, I just have one question. For a married couple, this year, it's $45,100. That's the adjusted gross income?
Yes.
So, if somebody's collecting SSI or deemed disabled by Social Security, and they receive $20,000 there, that counts towards that, it's not exclusive of that?
It does. It does include that income. You can, however, appeal to Office of Policy and Management, explaining that it is a one lump sum payment for this current year and prior years. It is their decision whether or not we can approve the application at that point.
Okay. And I think John mentioned, was it last year, John, 500 of our residents qualified for these credits?
That's correct, yes.
So, is it safe to assume, then, that as long as people meet the criteria, people will receive the credit, as long as they meet all the criteria? It's not that we get to a certain number and we say we're not doing anymore?
That's correct. We don't deny anybody unless they don't meet the criteria.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Riley and Counselor Basco.
So, the tax credit that they get, is it a flat rate? So, like, everybody who applies is going to get $500, or is that also different?
No, it's a scale.
It's a scale?
It's a scale, and it's somewhat of a calculation. It's your net assessment, then it's the mill rate percentage based on your income, so it varies anywhere from $150 to $1,250 off of your tax bill.
Okay. And then, so on your tax bill, when you get it, will it show on there that, you know, here's your reduction?
It shows state benefit, town benefit.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Counselor Basco.
So, so, excuse me. So, if I, if I'm a snowbird, and I put my address in Florida to try to avoid the taxes up here in Connecticut, and I qualify for this, I technically don't qualify, correct?
Well, I'm going to look at the addresses, and I'm going to question you, and then we will reach out to the county in Florida and say, "Are they getting a homestead? Are they getting an exemption down there?" We reach out.
Okay. And didn't the state do something different last year? I thought they didn't fund it fully or something.
The state does not fund this program whatsoever anymore.
Okay. Well, and that's where we got confused in the beginning, because it sounds like the state is paying for 50% of this, but on the contrary, that we are paying 100% of this, right?
That's correct. Previously, all the towns in the state would, would submit their applications and, basically the same way we do it, all right? They would, everybody who qualifies would be awarded the credits, and the state would then reimburse us up to the amount that they had appropriated for this program in the state budget. So, if they put aside $10 million, and the, the total of all the towns came to $10,100,000, that $100,000, they'd only pay out $10 million, and the $100,000 would be allocated to all the towns based on their applications. So, where I think it was in 2018, they no longer.
Seventeen, seventeen. It was two years ago.
They stopped allocating, appropriating any money at all. The, the program is still there, and we're still legally required to do it, but they don't reimburse us at all for it.
Mr. Mayor, it's an unfunded state mandate.
Right.
So, the first half, about $300,000, we have to offer, and we get no reimbursement. And then, last year, and the year before the council, the second half, you were able to afford that second, that matching part, if you, if you did a legislative act within the town to authorize it. So, the town did do that. We're not required to do that match, so not only do we pay the first $300,000 that we are required to pay, this council has decided in the last two years to continue matching it for the second $300,000 that we are not obligated to do.
Right. So, my, my point was, when you, when you read your, your sheet, it sounded like the state of Connecticut is giving 50% of this, and just so when people say we're not senior friendly, we're paying 100% of this, and we're not entitled, we don't have to do it. We're doing it because we want it, we feel bad that people need the assistance. So, I just want to make, let everyone know that this is something that the state is not paying. This totally comes out of everybody's tax dollars that are in this community. And, I mean, it's a good program, and I'm sure a lot of people need it, but the state doesn't give us a penny, and the only way we get money really is through taxes, and I just wanted to make sure that was straight.
Well, and I just want to reinforce that, that the year before last, in that very, very bad budget year where the state cut us on top millions and millions of dollars, this council did not abandon the matching fund. They could have, and it was very difficult. They made very difficult choices and very difficult draconian cuts in the, in the town budget, but they didn't touch this, and they honored it last year, and I think it's the intent of the council to continue it again this year.
Counselor Mueller.
I had a quick question for Della. Do you have to own the house outright, or can the bank, can you have a mortgage with it?
You can definitely have a mortgage. You just have to hold title.
Hold title, okay.
Or you have to have what they call life use.
Yeah.
That happens quite often. And the last would be a trust. And again, that's changed this year. Historically, if it was an irrevocable trust, you were not eligible. They have changed it. Now, it's just a trust where you own the property, you're responsible for the property, you maintain the property, you pay the bills for the property, and you're the beneficiary of the trust.
Anyone else? Counselor Sfaraza.
I'm with Joe. I thought, John, maybe I misheard, or maybe you misspoke. You said the state was $302,000. Did you mention that number, or am I just?
I did, yes.
What is that number?
Well, the, the program is administered, it's really two components to it. There's the state-required piece, and then the, the local ordinance that we match what the state does, okay? Give me a second.
Remember, to clear your language, the state is not funding.
Yeah, the state mandates us to pay on, under the ord, yeah. It's very, we've got to be abundantly clear. The first half, Mayor, is $300,000 that the state mandates we offer, and we have to pay it. They used to reimburse us, and then they stopped. The second $300,000 is what the town in its, well, its goodwill has offered on top of it, and that's when you bifurcate it, 300 and 300. So, when John said on your bill, it shows a deduction for the state portion, which we're paying. Actually, it's unjust that we have to put down, it appears that the state's giving it to them. Really should say Town of Enfield portion, and Town of Enfield twice, because you're right. Even here, sitting here, it's confusing, but we pay it. We help over 500 families, and the Town of Enfield pays every dime of that $600,000-plus each year.
So, in our budget, can we, can we make that change so it's clear? Do you have to put, if we're funding it all, why should we put the state's name down?
Well, all that is, is what we put on the, on the tax bills themselves when they go out. In the budget itself, because these are credits to taxpayers, that's money that we will not be receiving, so it's kind of all netted into the, the net revenue, tax revenue budget. That, it's in that line item there.
But you know, your points are well-taken, and John will look at it much like we did on another bill that went out. We clarified it just to use common sense language, a monthly charge instead of a ready-to-use charge that nobody understood. Likewise, here, if he's able to do that, I think the bill should reflect Town of Enfield payment pursuant to General Statute Blank, and then second, Town of Enfield second payment. So, it's very clear to people, if it isn't already, that we're paying the whole thing. I think that's important, because the state shouldn't get credit for something they don't pay for.
They're not funding, right. Thank you.
Counselor Kiner.
So, up until three years ago, I get this right, up until, yes, it's three years ago, the town was paying $300,000 and getting reimbursed by the state for $300,000, going back, what, three years ago?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, now we're looking at.
Not reimbursed, they matched it.
The matching, I'm sorry, matching, that's what I meant, okay? So, now, we're going to be paying $600,000. Is that right? Okay. Have you people been in contact with our state legislators to see if there's any possibility in this upcoming budget of the state funding this program?
I, I have not, but I believe our representatives have.
Bill, if anyone minds, before, Charlotte, actually, if you want to mind answering that question?
I'm sorry.
No, you have the floor, she's just going to answer your question, go ahead.
I sent an email to Senator Kissel, and then it was forwarded to Carol Hall as well, to ask for them to put it into their proposed finance bills, to have the reimbursement go back.
And response from Senator Kissel was?
That he's going to put it.
Charlotte, put your mic on, please.
He was, it is, huh? He was going to, he was going to put it, he's going to put it out.
He will be putting a bill in to fund? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Bill, you have the floor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Anyone else have any questions? Deputy Mayor Zuzak?
I think we should do these things, but again, I have to say it over and over again, this, for me, is different than, you know, providing, you know, food and utilities and things that are, they diminish. You know, you use them, they have a useful expectation, and then they disappear. Giving people a break on their taxes is maintenance of an asset. And the state needs to either help us, or they need to make the town whole for maintaining the asset, because if anybody needs state help later on, the state will take that asset. So, I think the Town of Enfield is really good to the citizens of the community, and we need to be, you know, cognizant of, you know, what we are doing, and we're actually helping the state as well. So, I guess I've sent my two cents.
Just curious, two questions. So, I know some folks who apply for this. Do we, I, I want to say this is, is there other ways? Sometimes we make other referrals, knowing if they come in and explain. So, I mean, that's the other thing here, is that I know there's people who could use some help, other than just.
One of the reasons we use the Community Services Office over on High Street is that they keep a database. If you're eligible for the homeowner program, you probably are eligible for other programs. She handles not just the town programs, but the other state programs.
That's huge, right.
So, based on that, we funnel everything over to her so that she makes sure that whatever you're eligible for, you're notified. She reaches out and says, "Time to file for this. You didn't file for this last year, you should have. Let's get you going on this program." And she works to make sure that all of them are available, are applied for.
So, just maybe a friendly request, I know you said you have till May 2 to apply?
May 15.
Is there ways of doing 60-day notice, press release? Because I know there's people out there that could use this program.
Yeah.
I know there are that not, don't know it qualifies, and it's, in my opinion, it kills me knowing that we're offering this, and there's people who could really use it. And that's the point, and to your point, then there's other referrals, which is the beauty of it. You actually can go get another referral for something you may need elsewhere. So, I don't know if we can do a press release or something, 90-day notice, 16, whatever it may be, I'll defer to you guys, just to keep reminding people, "Look, the deadline's coming. Please, if you feel you have any, you know, you're close, you're not sure, apply. Who knows, maybe you qualify."
Yes.
Because we want to make sure we capture as many people as possible, because I know there's more than 500 people who could really use this in this town.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, first of all, thank you. This has been great. I mean, this is hu, this is the stuff, I think, again, we need more of, that people know, remind them, there's, there is so much out there. If, again, to remind them, we can help them if, you know, and having the phone number there is huge. And then, I think a lot of people wouldn't know to go to the Community Service Office?
No, they often come to see us.
Right, right.
We'll give them all the information we have available, and then we will tell them, "Go see Community Services."
Well, it's great. I mean, I think, in my opinion, this is the best part of the whole presentation. Thank you for the referral comment.
Counselor Riley.
So, if it's their second or third time around, and you're sending out to them the So if it's their second or third time around, and you're sending out to them the reminder that you have to do this, do they have to call and make an appointment to go down there? Or can they just mail it back?
Nope.
Nope, they have to go down there?
Reason is, is that in many instances, if they don't file their IRS forms, they get confused on what's the taxable portion for the adjusted gross income and what isn't. So we want to make sure that they don't miscalculate what their income is. So that's what they make sure, that's what the appointment is for.
Oh, perfect. Great, thank you.
We'll do the press releases, Mayor, but we can't ensure that they'll...
Oh, fair enough, yeah.
We'll do it on our manager's website, we'll tweet it, and we'll put it on Social Services too. And we'll do the 90, 60, 30, so hopefully more people will see it.
Perfect.
Lastly, with your indulgence, Del is here on a bit of good news. We'll let her announce. She filed today with the town clerk, the town's grand list, and I think it's very good news, so I will let her share it with you and with our town presently.
Grand list went out.
Go ahead, Ed.
The grand list did go up. Even with the court cases that we had this year for the Enfield Mall parcels, we saw a increase of the grand list, just over 8 million.
So that's about over last year, 3%. So as I said, as we rebuild, hopefully, the square, that will go up next year again. And I will tell you, unprecedented, we had over 1,000 permits out of the building department for large companies, small, residential. So I think it's a very good indicator that we have a lot of economic movement in the town, both for residences, businesses, and industrial. I mean, it's a good harbinger of things to come.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Del on that? The tax office is a happy place.
We have a great time.
We should invite you more, more often, all the good news from the tax office. Thank you both, appreciate it. Moving on to Item 7, Public Communications. We ask that please, folks, refrain from personalities, and again, that you are an Enfield resident. Would anyone like to speak for the town council this time? Karen. Welcome.
She shut it off. Karen LaPlant, 166 North Maple Street. I'm here on behalf of the Agricultural Commission. I want everybody to know that we're having our second annual Northern Connecticut Agricultural Summit, Farming for Your Future. We've got on Saturday, February 29th, at Asnuntuck Community College. Doors open at 8:15, Continental Breakfast at 8:30. Keynote Speaker Joan Nichols, who is the Executive Director of the Connecticut Farm Bureau Association, will be speaking at 8:45. And then we've got four breakout sessions, or five, five breakout sessions that people can go to. We have four of them, we actually have 20 altogether, but four different rooms, we're going to have breakout sessions. So the first four are all four, and one of the rooms is going to be on hemp. We're going to have experts from the State Department of Agriculture, UConn, and some of the local growers that had experience this year with hemp. So that's going to be all four sessions in one room. Then we've got beekeeping basics from the Agriculture Experiment Station, social media, pollinating, hydroponics, exploring grants available through the Department of Agriculture, meat regulations, raising backyard poultry from the Connecticut Poultry Association, farm regulations and permits with Lori Whitten, our staff person, and Lisa Houlihan from the Town of Ellington. They're going to talk about different regulations. Farm resiliency, improving your soil's health with Emily Cole from the American Farmland Trust. Climate change, impacts and adaptation strategies for farmers by Kip Kolosinski, he's a very knowledgeable conservation consultant. Farmland access, Will O'Meara, Land for Good. This is for both people who have land they want to rent to farmers, and farmers who are looking for land, how do they access it? And then there's going to be one on Farm Insurance 101. Do you have enough coverage for your farm? So this is totally free. We got grants from, ShopRite's going to provide the Continental Breakfast. Asnuntuck is providing some of the facilities, we are paying for the, for part of it. Farm Credit East gave us a donation, as did, I think, People's United Bank, and UConn, and the Department of Agriculture all gave us funds. So pretty much none of it's coming from the town. So it's free, like I said, doors open at 8:15 on February 29th. It's a Saturday, and it goes till about 1 o'clock. The last class will get out about 1:10. And I think this, even if you're a backyard gardener, I think you'll find something here that you'd like to learn more about. So we would like to see a big crowd there. Snow date will be March 7th, unfortunately. Last year, we had to do our snow date, so I think it affected our attendance, but hopefully we won't have a snow date this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Anyone else like to speak for the council? Jack.
Welcome, sir. Thank you. Jack Sheridan, 7 Buchanan Road. Well, I'm actually sorry that they told you about the $8 million increase, because you guys are going to just want to spend it. But there's a few things, you know, I've said this before, and somehow I keep dragging myself in here, I don't get answers to my questions. Last week I asked, or week before last, well, meeting before last, I asked about a few things. The fiduciary on the Playhouse thing, got no financial status on where our taxpayer money is going on that. The lights on the police cruisers, got no input on what they cost. I've done some research, they cause accidents, they cause people to get hurt on sight, so, and that's factual. And I'll still go back to the $600,000 for the dump and the house at the dump. You know, the average house in Enfield costs, what, 250,000? And we're going to put a $500,000 facility at the dump? I just, last meeting I watched on TV and said, "You're watching every $5,000?" Doesn't seem like it to me. $36,349 for pickleball court? Who and how many people are going to use that? It's like the Ramp Court over there on Taylor Road. Very few people actually look at it. I don't, I don't agree with, you know, you talk about, I don't know if you heard on the radio this week, I think it was on 1360, they talked about how many millions of dollars more that the state of Connecticut pays for education and buildings and so forth than all the surroundings, any other state. We pay more and get less. The results are much worse. So, and a lot of that has to do with grants. We're spending grant money, you wonder how the state is running out, and I keep playing the same tune every time I speak, but you're running out of money because you're spending grant money on things that people really don't need. It's like, well, we got to take that money, otherwise somebody else is going to take it. Something has to happen there. We can't run our own budgets that way. I can't say, "Well, I'm going to just go out and buy a new car because I know somehow I'm going to raise the costs," or "Not pay my taxes." I don't, I don't get it. I got a statement today, though, and I wish I had brought it with me, I don't remember all the numbers, but there was a statement on what it costs from 20, from the year 2000 to today, and how much the costs for seniors has, we've lost 34%. That's just on insurance and what your Medicare eats out of your Social Security, that's how much it's gone down. And that's just on the one thing. And like I said, I wish I had brought the thing with me, I meant to and forgot it. But it's a lot worse than what that shows. That's just on that one item. So when you say that, you know, people are doing okay, there's a lot of things that the people in this town are having to make a decision on whether they, you know, I'm sure that they'd rather have insurance than a pickleball court. Or a $500,000 building at the dump. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else like to speak for the council this time? Bob?
Bob Teacat, 815 Woodgate Circle.
Welcome.
My comment last time on the rudeness of the police department, I would hope you guys have a program, because the school board put programs in from the complaints they got from the, from the public, and they, they took action. But I hope there's, I hope there's a comment tonight from the town manager about what programs put in for the police department. Staffing in the, staffing in the police department, I got an FBI report, 2016, 2018. There's total now 94 police departments in the state of Connecticut. Two new ones, East Lima and Ledyard in the last report. New Haven is the largest. 2016, they had 509 in the police department, includes civilians. Now they, they've downsized, they have 460. And their population increased. They say crime is going down, but we in Enfield keep increasing our staffing in the police department. All right, I'm going to go through the four towns that equal the size of Enfield. One of them is, I'm going to go backwards here, Wallingford. They have 71, this is 2018, they have 71 police officers. They have a larger population, because you got to forget, don't forget, we have a prison with supposedly 3,500 prisoners in there. I don't believe that number, I think it's a lot less. And they have 22, 22 civilians running the department, for a total of 93. Southington, 43,900. They have 66 full-time officers. Total of 87 with 21 employees. Shelton, 50 full-time police officers. Total of 10 employees for 60. So we have 95. Why do we have 95? Crime is supposed to be declining. One town has 105, which Councilman Carl Sprazza says we should be staffed at, and they're 52,000. So the numbers are off in Enfield. We should be downsizing our spending. Lower the taxes, that's the way the town is going to grow. But spending more money on this and that and all these things has to stop. We're going to improve the economy of Enfield, we have to downsize. We can downsize the police department. It's amazing, we had the two deaths of State Line? Where's the report from Enfield on that? It's a little overdue, the public should know why that chase went on. Maybe it was proper, but the two deaths is not proper, and that has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council this time? For the first time? Lucian.
Lucian Lefay, 54 Kimberly Drive, also Commander, American Legion 154. I just want to say thank you to the town council members, the town staff, and the Board of Ed that attended our 70th Annual Four Chaplains Mass. Look forward to seeing you again at our 71st. We're the only organization that's done 74 chaplains masses consecutively for 70 years. And I'm going to put a plug out there for Pam, I'm involved in it also, kind of in the background. Reeds Across America, it's not too early to get on board with Reeds Across America. The goal this year is 1,800 reeds to completely do St. Pat's Cemetery. So I mean, you can go online, order the reeds, it's really not too early to do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Lucian. Anyone else like to speak for the council? For the first time? For the second time? Karen?
May I approach?
Sure.
A little project for you, and for you.
Always got work for us.
This is the taxpayer. The yellow one represents the taxpayer.
I didn't get enough money.
You start with little.
Don't give Mike more than me.
I timed it, I can do it in five minutes. Karen LaPlant.
Three minutes, no, sorry.
166 North Maple Street. There is a proposed resolution on the agenda this evening to allow the Director of Finance to send a letter to the Hasbro Water Company and the Connecticut Water Company stating the town will no longer be responsible for fire protection charges. For those that don't know what this bill is, I will try to explain. We are talking about approximately $1.3 million that is a public utilities regulatory authority approved inch-foot water main charge paid annually to the water companies for them to have the resources necessary to provide adequate water flows for fire protection throughout towns. This hydrant is derived from the costs of water storage tanks, oversized water mains, hydrants, and pump facilities. The council may lead us to believe it is not their problem if they decide to stop paying this bill. As taxpayers, we will ultimately pay the bill, no matter who pays it, the fire districts or the town. We should all agree, we should pay the least amount possible. Let's try a demonstration. Mr. Mayor, I would like you and Deputy Mayor to be the taxpayer in this demonstration. You are both starting off with $2 and quarters in your yellow cups. Let this represent $2 million. We know the town is paying approximately $1.3 million to the water companies for fire protection. So let's round it down and say, let's say that it's $1 million. And the town passes this expense through the budget in the form of taxes to the taxpayers as one amount, and they pay the bill to the water company. So Ms. Deputy Mayor, could you please take $1 out of your yellow cup, your yellow taxpayer bucket, and put it into the green bucket to pay the town? Now transfer that $1, that $1 million to the blue water company bucket to pay the fire protection bill. Nice, clean transaction, right? Mr. Mayor, let's see what happens when we turn it over to the fire departments. Could you please take $1 out of your yellow taxpayer bucket and put it into the green town bucket? Because we pay all our taxes to the town. The town, many people may not know this, but the town charges fire districts 3% to process their fire district tax bills and payments. Please transfer 3/4 from the green town bucket into the fire department bucket, representing the amount that the town will retain.
That's not 3, yeah, that doesn't make sense.
I understand that. It's, it's just a representative, a coin, it's a coin.
I need pennies to make this right.
I know.
If we're going to demonstrate, it's got to be right.
But pennies, pennies adds to many dollars. I didn't think you'd want to deal with pennies. Then from the fire department red bucket, put a dollar into the water company.
You have 10 seconds left.
And ultimately pay the fire protection charge. But wait, the fire department doesn't have enough to pay the water protection charges. Because the town has taken their 3%. So without going over, basically, the town, by turning this over to the fire district, it's just a way for them to get an additional $41,000 without having to pay a bill. Because that's what the fire departments are going to have to charge extra to make up for the 3% the town is taking. And that's only at the 1.3 million, if that's, I don't know if that's the real number.
Over, Karen.
So. You need to not do this.
You can have your money back.
What are you giving her money back for?
Anyone else like to speak for the council? Bob?
Thank you, Karen. It's a perfect demonstration of why it should be in the right buckets.
Yeah, exactly.
Bob Teacat, Woodgate Circle. Again, this is another tax that's going to be passed on to the people. You're not going to reduce your tax by that amount. The fire departments have a higher taxing authority than you do. So you got to pay, the town's got to pay their share for fire protection. So do the right thing, and pay your share, and forget about what you're trying to do. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for the council this time? Going one more time?
Can we get a third?
Sure, one more time.
Just finish my point.
Karen LaPlant, 166 North Maple. So basically, the fire departments have to charge an additional $41,000 to be whole, to pay, be able to pay the bill. The town collects the extra $41,000, and the fire department's made whole, and they're able to pay the fire protection bill. So can the taxpayers conclude that this is just a ploy for the town to get additional fees from the collection of revenue from the fire districts? Or is it just a ploy to get fees from the taxpayer? Either way, the taxpayers are getting the short end of the stick. Why should we pay an additional $41,000 collection fee to the Town of Enfield Assessor's Office for a bill that should only be 1.3 million, not 1.341? The town already receives $340,000 to process these bills and payments from all the fire districts. At what point are the fire districts going to decide to process their At what point are the fire districts going to decide to process their own bills and payments, and the town will no longer see not only the $340,000, but the additional $41,000? If you decide to pass this resolution, are you going to decrease the budget by 1.3 million or just find another way to spend it? Are we going to end up in litigation with either the water companies or the fire districts due to this extortionate resolution? What kind of late fees will accumulate while this is being litigated? How much more will the taxpayers have to pay because of this decision? What might the additional litigation fees be to the taxpayers? It's coming out of our pocket. It doesn't matter if you pay it, just pay it. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? One more time? Fair public communications closed, move on to council communications. Councilor Sperazza, then Councilor Mangini.
Just wanna take a minute to respond to Mr. T. Kitz. I know at the last meeting, we had a similar discussion, but I think it's unfair to equate staffing with crime rates. Maybe a town has a better crime rate because they're more proactive and prevent crime, and it doesn't show up. So, these other towns you talk about, Bob, and I don't know, maybe they do the same service as we do, but, you know, just for example, if you lock your keys in the car, okay, in some towns, you call the police department and they say, well, call a locksmith. And at $150 later, the guy opens your car. We do that service here, it's not a priority service, but we send our officers out to do lockouts. We don't have to do that anymore. We could just say to the public, you locked your keys in your car, it's not our issue. Some police departments won't take complaints in person. Your bicycle was stolen. If it's under a certain amount, they'll just take it over the phone. I don't know if people would like to talk face-to-face with the officer, or they wanna talk over the phone with a call taker, they could do that, that would reduce staffing. We have, unfortunately, a high number of sexual assault people that have been convicted and are registered sex offenders. The law says that every three months, they will check in with the police department and make sure they haven't changed their address or whatever. Our police department goes beyond that because it's such an important thing. We send our detectives out in person, and we knock on every door every three months to make sure that sex offender is doing what he's gonna do. And if he's not, we report it and he goes back to jail. There's no mandate we do that. So, again, do other departments do that? Enfield holds a unique position that we're the first responders for medical emergencies. Other towns, the cops don't do that. You get a medical emergency, you call EMS. We have always held, going back to Chief Scholar in the 50s, the first responder license. So, think of the advantage you have with that, that you have an emergency, the first person you're gonna see is a cop sometimes, and he's an EMT. Most of them are EMTs. Other towns don't do that to their officers, they're not first responders. When we recruit officers, we wanna do a really good job of picking the best candidates we can. And one of the things we do is we have an in-house polygrapher, right? Police candidates have to take a lie detector test, a polygraph test. Not many departments, other than the state police, have their in-house polygrapher. So, what other towns do is they send them out to a private contractor at $500 a test. Thousands and thousands of dollars is saved because we dedicate, one of our detectives that also does our sexual assaults happens to be the polygrapher too. So, it's all about what we wanna pay for. If the citizens felt we don't need to do all these services, we are right, we could cut back on staffing. As a resident first, I want these services. I wanna know the police are gonna do these things for us. So, I don't think 95 is overstaffed. We haven't raised that number in years, years. Our detective division hasn't grown from 10 detectives in probably 15 years, yet our calls, our identity theft, cybercrime has increased. So, it's just a matter of what we wanna pay for. You also mentioned, do we have a policy on rudeness? Well, I think people are tired of me saying this, but we are a clear agency. We absolutely have a policy on that. The state had to pass a law several years ago because some police departments didn't have a policy for it. So, they mandated every department have a policy how to handle internal complaints. Didn't apply to us because we already had it in place. We have a spelled-out policy. If anybody ever feels that there's some, something has occurred that's inappropriate, you have the right to go to the police department and fill out a complaint form. Within so many days, you'll be notified, the chief office will be notified, an investigator will be assigned, and they'll investigate it. And we do that all the time. And if you don't wanna sign the report, you don't have to. We're very, when I say "we," I'm not with the police department anymore, but I know what they still do, and they're very good with that. But if nobody, it's easy to come here and say, this guy's rude or her rude, but my question would be, have you gone and filed a complaint and are unhappy with the way it was handled? Most of the time, people never even file the complaint. So, I don't think that's fair. As far as their pursuit policy you refer to, I don't have the knowledge why the report hasn't been released or whatever, but I will tell you that people don't know that when we have major accidents, and I'm not gonna ask them to speak at it tonight, but coincidentally, the head of our traffic division is here tonight, we have in Enfield officers trained as reconstructionists. What does that mean? It means if it's a fender bender, we don't, it's not the same thing. You lost a loved one? We wanna know exactly whose fault that accident was, how it happened, and because they're trained at a higher level, which requires them to go for months and months of training beyond what's required, we were able to solve the hit-and-run where the young man was killed on the skateboard. That investigation was solved on a little piece of evidence that our reconstruction has found. So, again, it's not, you're not wrong, Bob. I guess if you can say, let's cut these things out and drop the number of officers, then I guess you could do it. But I'm not ready to do that, and I don't know what the people think about it, but, like I said, it's not a simple thing. There's crime rates up here and it's down here, so if it's down here, they don't need as many cops. Maybe it's down here because we have more cops. Because, you know, in the end, when someone wants to commit a crime, there's two things that have to be in that person's mind. One, they have to have the desire to commit a crime, okay? And there's not much the police are gonna do about that. But number two, they have to have the belief that they're gonna get away with it. If they think they're gonna get caught, maybe they won't do it. And if you put adequate number of preventive patrols out there, and our officers patrol, that's part of what they're doing, is to create the thought in the mind of somebody that, geez, I never know when the cruiser's gonna come. You know, for a town this size, if you look at the number of calls we do that are not crime-related, well-being checks on old people, get that all the time. We save people lives with that all the time, missing people, Alzheimer's patients, all kinds of things. So, it's just a matter of what, you know, people wanna pay for. And I hear what you're saying, but I don't know enough about these other towns to know if they do these things, so I just wanted to say that.
Councilor Mangini, then Councilor Bosco, and Councilor Hamler.
Well, I can't begin to say it as eloquently and succinctly as Councilman Sperazza, but I too support our Enfield PD, and we have not been presented with the budget yet, so I don't know what's in it, but I certainly would support an increase in our officers. Any tools that they need certainly should be at their disposal, quite frankly, because we are very fortunate in this town to live in a very safe environment, and we should be reassured that the police have our backs, and I'm proud of that. So, I just wanted to support Councilman Sperazza on his eloquency. Again, I can't speak like you have, Carl, but I do wanna echo your thoughts. And then the second point I wanna make, and I'm gonna speak with Charlotte here, we've got trivia night coming up on Saturday at Mount Carmel, 7:00 PM, and it's gonna be a lot of fun. I never won the game, but it's still a lot of fun, and it's for a good cause, it's for the kids, for the first readers, and I would encourage people to come and participate if you haven't already. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bosco.
A couple things. One, Bob, you do a lot of numbers. I would love to know where these towns that you're getting numbers from, see what their population rises to during the day. Because Enfield probably doubles during the day with all the businesses we have and all the stores we have and all that stuff. So, I would love to know where the other towns are coming up. I could be wrong, but, you know, our population definitely does increase during the day. Karen, when you're gonna do something, you gotta make sure you do it right. So, what you tend to forget is we, first off, this is America. If you don't like something, you do something different. So, the fire departments are always on their own to, and I support the fire departments, I support them with my own money. So, this is not anti-fire department, but when you don't like something, you always can go somewhere else. So, they can always go pay their, do their, collect their own taxes and do it. That's their option. Then they can collect 100% of it, but it'll cost them a lot more to hire the people to collect their taxes than what we're getting already. The second thing, they're getting paid 100% of the money right now. We are the ones that don't get paid when we don't get paid for taxes. So, all them car taxes, all the property taxes that aren't paying, that's coming out of our pocket. It's probably more than what they're getting paid for, or what they're paying for the services. So, you know, when you're gonna put your demonstration out, you gotta make sure it's accurate because you have to put the other aspect. They're getting paid for money that they would never collect, and they can't collect it either. So, if someone doesn't wanna pay that tax, they don't have the big arm of the Enfield, Town of Enfield, to make sure that they can get that, because I remember that was something when I first got on, that the fire districts don't have the power to go after the people like Enfield does, and that's why we are collecting their taxes. But the problem is, and I would love to get rid of all the collection for the fire department because every time, we, five years, we held our taxes flat in Enfield because people were hurting. Every year, the fire department raised their taxes, the Town of Enfield got blamed for their taxes. People are going, what the heck, you're raising my taxes? No, we didn't raise your taxes, your taxes are flat. No, you're full of crap, my tax bill went up yet, last week, or last bill. Why? Because the fire department raised it. So, if you want transparency, this is what we need to do for transparency. Not, but again, if you're gonna make a demonstration with change, like the point with taking 3/4 out, well, we don't take 25% of their money. You really needed the pennies in there to make sure it looked right. But they can always go collect their own stuff, they can do their own materials for the fire trucks, for the medical, they can go and pay for all their, whatever we pay for, their dispatch and all that, that they pay us back for, that's still miniscule compared to what it would cost them if they opened up their own dispatch center. So, you know, things have to be right if you're gonna do something, you know? And people listen up here, and they take what people say to heart, but if they don't know the whole facts, that's not right either. So, I just wanna make sure everyone knows, them fire departments get paid 100% because we collect 3%, they get 100%. And if someone shorts us, that 2 or 3% that we lose on taxes, we pay the fire department and they're sure. And also, there's a lot of property that we can never collect on. We have properties, we probably have, we probably have 30 properties that we should've been foreclosing on many years ago. There's stuff on Weymouth Road, there's stuff on Hayfield, there's parcels all over the Town of Enfield that are still on the tax rolls that we should've foreclosed on, that we can, we have no possibility of ever collecting taxes on them, but they get their 100% on them taxes, and we possibly never will see that money. And there's a lot of them little slivers here that we could never collect, but they get theirs.
Councilor Hamler.
I had a couple conversations with some residents. One was a young man in sixth grade, he was, he's going to the Eagle Academy, and I wanted to share it with you because he was just so proud to be going to the school, so I was excited to hear that. Another resident, and I said I would mention her, Rosemary, she signed up for Dial-A-Ride, and she's really enjoying it, and I just wanted the Dial-A-Ride bus driver, if she's listening, that she really had a good time and enjoyed it. The Opera House Players is still doing their production of Legally Blonde. I saw it, it was really entertaining and fun. The last weekend is this weekend, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so get out there and get your tickets. You can also go to the library, apparently they have discounted tickets, but I would call ahead because they're limited, but it's an option. Lucian, the Four Chaplains Mass was very, very nice. It was, I really, really enjoyed it. It was very moving, and I definitely will be attending in the future. That was great, and thank you so much for the lunch that you provided, that your post provided. One other thing, oh, this Friday, February 21st, Panera is opening their new location, well, actually, they open today, the new location with a drive-through, which I'm excited because I love their food, at State Line Plaza, but their ribbon cutting is this Friday at 10 o'clock, so hope to see you there. Thanks.
Councilor Mueller.
Yep, I'd like to remind the residents, Buzz Robotics is having their fundraiser Pasta Supper on Wednesday, March 4th, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, St. Bernard's Church, 426 Hazard Ave. The kids are working really hard on the robot, and it's almost complete. Thank you.
Councilor Riley.
So, I'm just gonna echo Councilor Mangini, since she helped me out, but I'm gonna get into more detail. This is the last time you're gonna hear me talk about this. First Readers are one and only fundraiser of the whole year. That provides all of the certificates, medals, t-shirts for all of these students who earn their First Readers, is on Saturday at Mount Carmel at 7:00. Doors open at 6:00. Tables of 10 are $130, and single tickets, you can come in and we'll put you at a table with some random people, and you'll have a good time. That will be $15 a person if you do it that way. So, come on and bring your treats, your drinks, it's adults only, it's a good night out. We got great trivia questions this year. Scott Copen's the MC, Scott Ryder's the sound guy, and we're gonna have raffles, and you get prizes if you win the table rounds, and we have speed rounds for individuals, so come on down, support a good cause, and I can't wait to see y'all there on Saturday.
Deputy Mayor Susak.
Actually, Joey, you probably said it all, but you know, the cups is probably the perfect demonstration of what we're trying to do. Trying to understand where does all the money go and how does it get paid for? Yes, the end person who pays for it is the taxpayer, but we need to always know what we're doing, and sometimes it takes something like a utility and a large rate increase and a bill that we weren't expecting for us to understand that, hey, this is something we don't know about, and we need to investigate it, and we need to understand it. And just because we've always done something one way doesn't mean we should always do it forever. So, on that note, anything else I'll discuss when we're at the resolutions, like the pickleball? That is not actually just for pickleball courts, it's used money that was intended for, I guess, repairs and maintenance and converted into something, and I apologize, my 150 signatures are sitting on my desk at home, but I will get them to the town manager so that they can get into the record, okay? Thank you. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items A1 through A3, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, and Q to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Second motion made, second by Councilor Mueller. Any discussion, suspend the rules and move the miscellaneous? If you're in favor, show of hands, all those in favor. Opposed, abstentions, 11 in favor, 0 against, motion made and passed. One second, Debbie, you're done?
I'm all set, thank you.
Councilor Ungar.
Just wanted to mention a couple things. The seniors have a blue book coming out with all kinds of information that are senior-related, and the final review's gonna be March 9th, so after that, it's gonna go to print, so those will be available for all the seniors. Also, the small senior home Also, the small senior home repair, the senior small home repair is going to start up again on March 31st. So if anyone has some small projects, they can call the senior center, and we'll send someone out to help you.
Councilor Bosco.
Okay. Now that my blood pressure's down a little bit, I need to apologize for getting so hot because I usually agree with you. So on this one, I didn't. Yeah, there's always a first time. But one thing I want to make sure we have during budget this year, and, and it's something that both Bob and Karen said, is, you know, what, what's going to happen? We're going to spend this, this million dollars once we push it over to somebody else? So I just, I, last year, I asked, or, well, probably a few months ago, I asked what our fixed costs were. So I just want people to understand, we have approximately a mil and a half increase every year of fixed cost. So this year, I'm, I'm going to be sure it's going to probably be a little more because we got a lot of zeros on, on different stuff. So this year, it's going to probably be a little more. So what people don't realize is, every year, just like we do in our houses, we have an automatic increase. So when the town of Enfield goes and gives a zero, they're actually doing a tax decrease because our bills are going up too. So for budget time, when the budget comes out, wherever your, your budget may be, I want to see what the automatic tax increase is. So this way, if we have to go up a mil, 10 mils, 100 mils, or we go down a mil, 10 mils, or 30 mils, and, and don't charge taxes at all, we need people to understand how much the fixed cost that we don't have any time in it. And that's the state mandates that we don't get paid back, just like the circuit breaker. We get pay raises, health insurance, workman's comp, liability insurance. These are all things we have no choice on if they're going to go up or not. And water bills go up, heat and oil, gas. So all these things go up every year for the municipality, the same as it does with our own budgets at home. So I want to make sure, because again, you, you defer a million dollars somewhere, and then somebody's going to say, "Well, now you're just spending that money because you have it." No. Your taxes would have went up a mil and a half last year. We only went up three quarters. We actually had a three quarters of a mil decrease. Now, I know numbers don't lie. Liars use numbers, but no matter what, we have less spendable income in the town of Enfield. And I just want to make sure that that's there when we do our budget. Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, the town manager report.
Yeah, and to that point, I appreciate that, Joey, and what we did last year, and we'll do it again this year, and hopefully we'll have, we're trying to consolidate the community conversation with the public hearing in hopes that more people will come, because in our presentation, we tried to address that. And we've made it very clear, and I'll do it again this year, this is what it costs to turn the lights on. This is what it costs just to do business in the town. If there were, and we've talked about that as the mandatory, it's the cost increases, it's wages, it's our utilities. And then really, for any other amount we look at, it's the CIP. Do you want to have to do the new wall that DEP is going to make us do over at the freshwater dam? That's $450,000. Do you want to do the drainage over in Orlando that's about maybe, you know, upwards of $500 to $800,000 that DEP is making us do? So it's not as though, once we pay all the mandatory, that the discretionary spending is just fun things, things that, you know, we, a wish list of what we want to. It really comes down to then going to the list of things that we're under mandate to do. So we'll try to stress that at the community conversation, the public hearings. We put it out on the website, and hopefully more people will attend or look at it and understand what the point you're trying to make. To that end, I'll just, I want to just preface, and I'm going to address a lot of the issues, but I'd like to say, we have an incredibly wonderful first responder system in this town. Police, EMS, and fire. We work really well together, and I've said it many times, and it bears saying again, we have the best first response in the state of Connecticut. Whether you're calling because you have a fire or a concern of a crime or an EMS call, those, those three disciplines in this town, EMS, whatever fire department, and the police work seamlessly to help our residents. I don't want us to lose sight of that. I don't want to jeopardize that. We might have discussions, as other people do in your household, about a bill or things that we can try to work out, but we're brothers and sisters. We're a family at the end of the day, and I would hate to see any diminution of that cooperation in the field. I don't want this to carry over. We'll discuss this. And one item that I don't want to conflate, which is the collection of the taxes. We've had an agreement with the fire departments, and we have others for MOUs to try to assist them. If we can work together and economies of, you know, scale and do things cheaper for each other, that's what we've tried to do over the years. And we do have a memo of understanding since 1976 to collect the taxes for the districts. It costs for 3%. It stayed there since 1976, I believe, and it's coming due in June. So we're going to have the discussion because it's going to be public. It isn't an embarrassment, and we shouldn't be afraid to have public discussions of issues that are important, because the taxpayer, you're right, there's a right pocket, a left pocket, but it really should go in the right pocket at the end of the day, or come out of the right pocket.
Correct.
And that's the discussion. So let's do it civilly. Let's do it in the great tradition of Enfield we've always done with our volunteer fire departments, our great police department, and our great EMS. And I, I want to just stress that. We'll, we'll work through all of these issues, and we'll continue to have the best EMS, fire, and police in the state of Connecticut. Number one, in response to Jack, and I think I understand his question, I don't want him to wait any longer. I misunderstood that he was waiting for information, but the Opera House Players, initially, we had given them the old senior center for zero, $1 a year. And then last year, or the year before the council, we raised it, Mr. Sheridan. They pay $750 a month for rent. They pay all of the cost of repairs and their utilities, and next year, it goes up to $1,000 a month. The end goal is for them to buy the building and, and continue to make the improvements and open it up as a wonderful cultural center for the town of Enfield. So at this point, I don't think there's any contribution by the town of Enfield to the Opera House Players, and we can follow up if that didn't answer your question completely. Two, in regard to the transfer station, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. We had a presentation of a wish, and it's one of the wishes I talked about, about upgrading out there at the transfer station. It isn't written in stone. It hasn't been decided. We're going to look at it in the budget. But I will let you know that while the whole package that they proposed was $555,000, the building itself isn't $600,000. It was $167,000. It's not the Taj Mahal. It's not a recreation center. It was to try to lift it up so that, you know, actually, we wouldn't be embarrassed to say that our employees work out of that facility. The real ancillary costs that were expensive, it's about $145,000 for site work, paving, adequate parking. It's $145,000 just to get the water main there. So there were other ancillary costs, but we have by no means approved that, Mr. Sheridan. That will be discussed and decided by the council when we look at the CIP portion of the budget this year. In regard to, and I think because this is critically important to our, to our residents and citizens, we do investigate police complaints. The chief has outlined the policy, but I want to assure you that we don't wait for a written complaint. When I get, and it's rare, but when I get a complaint, if it's forwarded to me by a council or a resident, I immediately contact the chief of police, and they investigate it, usually immediately. If it's something more complex that would entail an internal affairs investigation, that could take longer, but we take it very seriously. And as the chief said, I, I was public safety director for, I think, 12 years, and I am now, as well I wear that hat as manager. We have a great department. We don't have much in the way of discipline or problems with rudeness or other issues, but we toe the line. We impose discipline. And you just have to look at the record at the labor board and commission, talk to the union president. We're fair, but we're tough, and we enforce the rules. And it makes our police department better, and it gives our residents confidence in the police department when they call 911. We take it seriously. If anybody has an issue, certainly they can feel free to go down and file a form of complaint. You can call me, and we'll, we'll pursue it for you. In regard to the other matter, and again, this is a very, very serious matter, we were here on the town green. We saw, and I went up to the accident site and saw the carnage of that double fatality. Just to be clear, people always, you know, sometimes complain, "Well, the police are investigating themselves." We're not involved in that investigation. The Mass State Police, the Long Meadow Police, and the Connecticut State Police are conducting that. They're doing a very thorough job with the Mass State's Attorney's Office. We are out of it. So when they have results, they will make them known, and they will share them, and it will be public. We have no control over that. And that's the way it should be. And something that's serious, we have stepped back, as the chief says, we have a accident reconstruction squad. We are even part of a regional traffic reconstruction squad. In this instance, the chief deferred so that it would all be very transparent, and the Connecticut State Police, Mass State Police, Long Meadow Police are conducting that investigation. On a happier note, I will just say to follow up on Ms. LePlante talking about the Ag Fair, it was a great success last year, well over 100 and some odd people, and she would know the number better, even though they had to defer to the rain date. So we're, we're hopeful it will be a success this year. I'm so glad she outlined the different programs, and we encourage everybody to go. I'll also say, you know, we are an agricultural community. We, we lose sight of that. You know, we have so many large companies and corporations and neighborhoods, and we have a, a robust population, but that was our roots, and we still have a very healthy farming community. And we'd like, we like to take a little better advantage of that. So I'll just tell you, coming up, stay tuned. We have a community garden. Grant money was given to us. We have a waiting list in Thompsonville for it. We've, we found one or two other locations. Nelson, Teresa was also looking for some grant money to expand it, so we can bring that, not only Thompsonville, but other parts of town. You know, we have people in Mayfield, and we have people in apartments and around the town. If you have a desire and interest to have a community garden near you, whether it's on town land, or we can help, let us know. I think it would be wonderful to get people off the couch, off the, off the games, and get them out and till the soil and grow something. So we're doing that. And I'll also tell you that we're reinvigorating, and we're going to be bringing this forward to our farmer's market. It was on Wednesday afternoons. It was successful, but we found and we've looked that people are more interested to do it on the weekend. You're going to games, you're going to, to do your shopping. We have a great town green, so we're going to move it. We've had outreach to a lot of farmers in Enfield who, you know, it's sad to say, weren't participating, because on Saturdays, they actually go out of town to some that have been successful in the area. They've asked if we would do it on Sunday. We're going to, so hopefully we'll get them to participate. And I, we're going to have a lot of exciting, there's a lot of new ideas, there'll be a big kickoff. We'll let you all know. I think it'll be a great addition to the repertoire of the great celebrations we have here in the town of Enfield, from 4th of July to Mount Carmel, to all of our parades and different events we do for families all throughout the year. So those are a couple of the positive things, and I think I covered everything that was asked of me.
Any questions of the town manager?
I just want to make one quick comment. I mean, I think it's through the leisure. I've seen the new program, the chess club for ages three to five. What a fantastic idea. And when you're trying to teach your child to think, what a great game to learn how to think when it comes to strategy, understanding the moves of the game. It's a great age. I, if it's through leisure, I'm sorry, it's a great game. It's a great way to teach an individual how to think, and I'm so glad to see that we're actually promoting it, you know, through the leisure, our leisure department, because what a great way to help our young people, again, just learn how to move the rook the way it needs to go. I used to be pretty good in the day, by the way. And, and Chris, real quick to the, to the point, we released it last year, where we actually went back, John did an analysis back the last 15, I think, years of unpaid taxes. We released that report, came through the general governance committee, I think it was around $11 million or so between property taxes, car taxes, and personal property. Where again, for, we went through a very tough recession in this area for a number of years. For, for whatever reason, we didn't, we undercollected roughly $11 million. And that's, that's fact, I mean, to what, what this community has dealt with. And we've changed our policy. So that's the point of what we're doing here. We're recognizing things, and we're changing policy. Good news is we actually have collected 11, or, excuse me, $1 million of unpaid soar tax over the last year or so. We actually almost collected $1 million of unpaid car, car taxes. So we're actually trying to do right by the taxpayers who pay their taxes. You know, and then we're working on the ambulance fund as well. So these are things that, again, we recognize have occurred, and we're changing as we go forward, because again, we can't continue to undercollect $11 million. Then again, when you talk about getting things done, that could have got a lot of roofs and roads done if we collected all $11 million for various reasons. So I mean, that was part of our presentation last year. Maybe we have to re-release that, just to remind people what we've dealt with from a recession for the last 15 years, and how we're addressing it on a go-forward basis. I mean, I don't know if John can update the, you know, but I think that's the good stuff that we've looked at and recognized we needed to do better.
We'll have him update that, and we can have a future report.
It's in the par, and I recommend the residents read the par, because there's a lot of good stuff in here that's going on all over town. You know, some of the news of the new hires of the police, some of the things they got recognized coming out of the, you know, out of the academy. I mean, again, this is all good stuff, and it goes across every single department. Again, the chess club stuff is great. It's great stuff that you're offering. Again, we're trying to help those young people think. That's a great game to do it. So again, I commend the leisure. Last thing, I know we asked when Jason was here about a month ago, will he be able to come back to his, be a special guest to show the, the, what do you, I'm sorry, the instrument thing?
Yes.
Yes. Which is another, again, great example of helping.
Yeah, that was a great innovative program. It's been a great success. He did a report to us on it at a weekend session, and it's been just remarkable. It's exploded. People are donating. People are, you know, able to introduce to their children instruments that they never would have been able to afford to have. It, it's been a remarkable success story, so we'll have him here to share it coming up.
Thank you.
Moving on to the town attorney report.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick item by way of follow-up. Councilor Mangini, you had asked at the last meeting about the Captain Thomas Abbey monument, and so we did chase that down, and there is in fact a written agreement. There are shared responsibilities. The town is generally responsible for the maintenance and repair of the statue itself, whereas the Enfield Congregational Church is responsible for more of the landscaping-type activities, grass cutting, trimming, leaf raking, and such. So there are these shared responsibilities, and now that we have that answered, we'll get somebody out there from Public Works and make sure that, pardon? Well, to, to the extent, yeah, if it's our obligation to ensure that the agreement is, is honored and that the, the maintenance is performed.
Just so you know, that was, that was actually a resolution that we voted on, I think it was a year and a half ago, so it's actually, I don't know the resident, right?
It's in the right of way.
So, yeah.
It's 2018 agreement, so we'll, we'll follow up again on that. You bet.
Any questions for the town attorney from anyone? Hearing none, moving on to item 11, reports of any special committees. Councilor Muller?
JFK building update. We meet this Thursday. We'll approve the final drawings and bid specs. On February 25th, the committee presents to the Board of Education. On the 26th, the state goes, the committee goes to the state for final approval and to get their blessing. On March 3rd, the bid packages will go out. We anticipate between 32 and 37 bid packages. Some of the bid packages were site services, demolition, concrete foundations, concrete slabs, masonry, structural steel, metals, carpentry, thermal and moisture protection, doors, windows, finishes, specialty equipment, fire, fire protection, plumbing, HVAC, and electrical. You'll start to see mobilization begin during April break with a June groundbreaking ceremony planned. We also, swing space will be in the media center and cafeteria. Thank you.
Any questions? Just on this, I meant to ask, I mean, I know our staff stepped up with the, the temporary boiler that had an issue, and our folks worked all through tonight to make sure there was no issues. So good stuff.
So, good stuff. Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Okay, last week, the DPW met Joey with Rhodes, and we're looking, in the budget, in this budget, 2020 budget, they were looking to put the referendum limit of financing in for Summers Road, if that would move forward with the council. There is the plan for the Rhodes referendum in November, but Summers Road is a road that is in, that's in distress, it carries a lot of trucks. I know we would like to put the signage up, that we would request the trucks not use it, but that is not enforceable, but I think signs could be put up if we'd like, but they're not enforceable, and people should understand that, that it's just, you know, a request by us. But I always say, the speed limit, though, can be reinforced. So, that being said, that's up for consideration, if we could see that on the agenda, and it could go through whatever committees it has to go through or anything for that. Also, Facilities will be meeting on February 27th, and Councilor Bosco will be our special guest, because we're going to discuss two things there. We've had presented to us, which we are in support of, is a concurrent system of doing roofs with a roof referendum in September, or in November. It would be a, the roof referendum would be for town roofs and it would be for school roofs. Our school roofs are all beyond the referendum limit due to the size of the buildings, our town roofs are not. They could be done through regular CIP, but we thought a blend of the two would be better. So, the counselors decided that we would have Joey come as a special guest, so we could show them what we've been working on, so that the DPW would hopefully support that. But that also would entail that we put money in the 2020 budget for the Eli Whitney Phase One and for the Hazeville Memorial School Phase One, so that we are not losing a summer's worth of work that we would be doing on our roofs as we go and prepare for referendum. So the other thing that we'll be discussing at the facilities will be the transfer station, and we will discuss that at length and see what we can recommend and back for budget considerations. So that's our update, and we look forward to you coming, Joey.
Anyone else have any reports, special committees?
Looking forward to go to it.
Moving on to item 12, old business, on page 1A, 1 and 2 remains on the table. Items 3 through 14, again, no action. Item B, town manager appointments, 1 and 2, again, nothing. Going over to page 3, again, town manager appointments from 3 to 16, there are none. On top of page 4, under old business, there are no appointments, P&amp;Z Commission appointed, council approved. Item D, discussion of school roofs.
I'll just remove that from the table.
Motion to remove.
Second.
Second by Councilor Sacala. All those in favor are moving from the table by a show of hands. Opposed abstentions, 11 in favor, zero against. Okay. Discussion.
I think, the reason I'm asking for this to be removed at this time is that the roofing referendum that we're looking at includes both school and town roofs and is a five-year plan. It's something that our staff has given a lot of consideration to, a lot of work has gone into it, and Facilities, hopefully with the blessing of the Chair of the DPW, will be all bringing this forward.
Anyone else from that committee? Councilor Sacala? Councilor Mueller? Anything? Anyone else have any questions or concerns on school roofs? Do I have a motion to move back to the table? Deputy, Councilor Mueller, seconded by Councilor Mangini, all those in favor are making on the table by a show of hands?
We can just totally remove it.
Well, unless you, I thought they wanted.
I think it could occur someplace else, I think that's the reason to just.
All right, so you want to pull it off, so, sorry, I remove, remove your motion, move your second by Councilor Mangini, so, 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 no, meaning, don't second to table it, remove your motion, so it's back on the table, you removed your second. So now the motion is to completely move this discussion item, item D, school roof replacements, off the agenda, so, meaning it'll be permanently off the agenda. Do I have a motion to remove off the agenda? Got Councilor Mangini, seconded by Councilor Mueller, any discussion on the motion? Should I roll call this, or a show of hands, okay? By a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed abstention, it is now off the table. Moving over to item 13, new business, there are none for item A, the consent agenda. Item B, appointments, Town Council, for prison liaison committee, the reappointment of Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall, do I have a nomination?
Yes.
Councilor Mueller?
I'd like to nominate Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall.
Seconded by Councilor Sparazza. Any, is there a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Deputy Mayor Suzak, seconded by Councilor Riley, all those in favor closing nominations by a show of hands. Opposed abstention, any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sparazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Councilor Sacala?
Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall.
Councilor Hemler?
Four.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
We have 11 in favor, none against.
Item 2, the prison, another prison liaison committee appointment, reappointment of Nelson Rodriguez, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Councilor Mangini?
I'd like to bring forward the name of Nelson Rodriguez for reappointment.
Motion made by Councilor Mangini, seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak, do I have a motion to close nomination?
Motion to close.
By Councilor Sacala, seconded by Councilor Mueller, all those in favor closing nominations by a show of hands. Opposed abstention, 11 in favor, zero against, is there any discussion on the main motion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Mangini?
Nelson Rodriguez.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sparazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Nelson Rodriguez.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Councilor Sacala?
Nelson Rodriguez.
Councilor Hemler?
Four.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
It's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Item under new business, item C, appointments by the town manager, council approved, there are none. Item D, appointments by a P&amp;Z Commission-appointed, council approved, again, there are none. Excuse me, moving on to item 14, items for discussion, A1, 2, and 3 have been moved to miscellaneous. Item B, appointments, the ethics, that stays on, there's no, just a resignation note, notice. Item C, appointments, town manager appointed, council approved, there are none. Item D, appointments, P&amp;Z Commission-appointed, council approved, again, there are none. E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O has been moved to miscellaneous. Item P, discussion resolution regarding adopting a policy procedure for the until dawn council meetings, remains under items for discussion. Should I, do I need to read the, if it stays on, do I need to read the resolution or just open it up for discussion? So we open up item P for discussion, anyone like, anyone from the committee? Councilor Mangini, then Deputy Mayor Suzak.
On this particular resolution, I'll be voting against it, and that's because.
We're not voting tonight.
We're not voting. Oh, not voting, are we just talking about it?
It's a discussion, because it's a month from now, we're letting people make comments, so we can.
Oh, all right, okay, then I'll.
But do you have any comments to improve it? I mean, that's, that's the point. Okay. Counsel, Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Yes, this is, we've been working with Kelly and Jean and I have been working on this for about two months, and we've putting it out for what we use to call first read, and it's, we're looking for adoption on March 16th, and we're looking for the counselors to please read through this and submit any of your questions or concerns to the committee so that we can address them, because I truly believe that this should be a unanimous vote, and I know we've all worked really hard to get to that point. So, this is the, what the Board of Ed calls a first read, so everybody read it, look at it, what's yellowed, emboldened in italics is what the changes are. Anything that's, that's been approved prior would have to be a new suggestion, and we should follow the procedure for requesting a new suggestion. Thank you.
Councilor Mangini.
Thank you, and I apologize for jumping the gun, pardon the expression, but I do have a question, if I may, on page 6D, where we talk about public communications.
We actually, do you have the new wording, Cindy? Because Jean and I have been working on that, okay, thank you.
Is that correct? Is that accurate?
No, it's not.
Sixty is gone.
Okay, well, I don't have the new one, I couldn't open that one.
The one I emailed you?
Yep. So is, is town staff going to send us the new?
Yes, we've been working on it today, and we'll get, and we'll get a new paragraph out to you on that.
All right, then I'll hold, hold my question.
Okay, perfect.
And if I have any questions about the new, then I just send it to the committee, the question?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? It'll remain on the table, again, our goal is to hopefully vote on it in a month. If you have any que, after you read it, we suggest everyone read through it, any concerns, send it to the committee, and it'll be addressed.
Thank you.
Our goal is to make sure everyone has a say in it, because, again, it's the entire council procedures. Okay. Moving on to item 15, miscellaneous. So the item A, the consent agenda, under miscellaneous, sorry, let me just get there. Item A1, request for transfer funds for $3,600 for the town manager. This got, request A2, request for transfer funds for youth and family service of $8,000. And item 3, request for transfer fund for youth service of $3,800 from United Way, it's on a consent agenda, I mean, any questions on it? Hearing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor of the consent agenda. Opposed abstentions, 11 in favor, zero against. Moving on to item E, under miscellaneous, and just bear with me, let me get there.
Don't ask me, I can't tell.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm almost there. Okay, all right, here we go. Okay, item E, under miscellaneous, apologize, folks, request for transfer funds for the Enfield Child Development Center of $70,000. Resolved in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8, F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. To the Enfield Development Center, food of $70,000, from the Head Start Grant, USDA revenue of $70,000. Certified, the above funds are available on February 6, 2020, by John Wilcox, the Director of Finance, approved by Christopher Ronson, the Town Manager.
So moved.
By Councilor Mueller, seconded by Councilor Mangini.
The Director of Social Services is here, but this is housekeeping, this is money to reduce costs. The Enfield Child Development Center prepares meals on behalf of the Head Start and the Stowe Learning Center. The Board of Ed pays per meal cost for that, for the development center, and this transfer is just going to cover it through the end of the year.
Any questions on that?
There's no budget impact, it's within the budget.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Mangini?
Four.
Councilor Mueller?
Four.
Councilor Riley?
Four.
Councilor Sparazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Councilor Ungeyer?
Four.
Councilor Bosco?
Four.
Councilor Sacala?
Four.
Councilor Hemler?
Four.
Councilor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
That's 11 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item F, discussion resolution adopting, resolution adopting the elderly services care coordinator job description. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 2 of the Town Charter, the Town, Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt the job description for elderly service care coordinator. Submitted on February 7, 2020 by Steve Belinda, the Director of Human Resources.
So moved.
By Councilor Mueller?
Second.
Second by Councilor Mangini. Welcome.
Good evening.
Welcome. Just name and title, and anything you would like to, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Cindy Guerrier, Director of Social Services for the Town of Enfield.
I'll give the, just, just, just for, by way of background, after and during the discussion of the adult daycare closure, council indicated that they wanted those funds still to be designated and earmarked for seniors. There was an identified need, actually, from people within the community, even those affected by the closure of adult daycare, that we needed somebody to actually be in charge of, shepherding people through all of the different processes, and Medicare, Medicaid, different programs for the elderly. Now, some have said, can't an existing employee do it? Well, unfortunately, or fortunately as the case may be, we did have a social worker, Cindy can get into that, doing outside her job description that, but not doing it full-time and not doing it as well as somebody who's an expert in it. So, because council said work and we don't want those funds to disappear, she worked with Steve Belinda to designate a person to do this job full-time within the town to help our seniors. So with that background, she can explain it and then answer any of the questions that you might have.
What's yours?
So, as the town manager said, there are, we get a lot of calls every day, specific to issues that elderly folks are facing. What that means is that it detracts the social worker from working with the rest of the community and the adult division. The, the social service department really does focus a lot on youth and family and early childhood. This allows us to give the same amount of time and effort into seniors. We really do need somebody that's got a specialization in working with the elderly, because the needs are very different, and this allows us to do that.
Counselor Sparazza?
So, just what the town manager said, some people have suggested that we have people already in social services, we have existing staff, and why don't we just assign these duties to existing staff? And the reason we can't do that is.
Because there's too many things to do for one person. I did ask our social worker that is dedicated to the adult population right now to just give me a list, a bulleted list of all of the responsibilities and duties, and it was two full pages to come, to be able to serve everybody.
And if they did that, they wouldn't be able to do their other responsibilities.
Can't, you can't do it.
So, you know, as you look at this, we're talking about an elderly population, some people are very good going online and downloading things, and other people are not. And, you know, it's so important that our seniors are taken care of, that we have resources for them to help them with our, the presentation we had tonight, the credit, maybe they need some help with medical, pharmacy, whatever it is. And some people say there's other resources that, outside of the town, already in place, like the local nursing homes, they have senior care, and I'm sure they can help those residents with specific things, but that's not their primary function at the nursing home, correct?
Correct. So the, so the answer to this, yes, there are lots of services available to provide the care, the physical, mental care. What this role will do is to be that care coordinator, linking peoples to services that they're not aware of.
Right.
That's going to be a huge piece of the work. We also work with people that walk in off the street and have questions around Medicare, managing that is very challenging. Somebody came in today, they need a hearing aid, and how do they qualify because of income? So there's so many issues that people have outside of getting care in a facility.
Right. And I see, I certainly support this, and I certainly see the value in having one central repository where it's like a quarterback, they can coordinate all the activities. I'm sure from time to time, maybe elderly residents might go to our congressman's office, and I'm sure they're very helpful in there and direct them where they need to go, but it's not the same as having it here. And I'd hate for residents, especially those on fixed incomes, to miss out on a $600 or $700 tax credit, because no one should have to choose between getting 600, that's a couple, you know, that's groceries, and if these services are there, they need to feel that there's one place they can go to, and I want the town to take that lead, so I support this. Thank you.
Council Riley?
I just wanted to bring up the fact, when reading through the job description, I just kind of want to let everybody know that when Enfield does something, they're not going to go halfway, they're going to go all the way and try to knock it out of the park, which is why the minimum qualifications that you're going to have to have for this job is you're going to need a master's degree in social worker-related field and two years of experience working with the elderly and the senior services system of care. You must be a licensed eligible social worker, and certification in geriatric care management is a plus. So it's not just like we're going to let anybody do the job, we're going to make sure that you're completely and honorably qualified to assist the population that has a high demand and multiple facets that need to be addressed. So I just wanted to just point that out, that when Enfield does something, we try to do it to the very best of our ability, and I thank you for that.
Anyone else?
Can I just add, the other really important part of this role is to maximize the resources that are already in town, and so coordinating with the circuit breaker program, the Commission on Aging, the Isolated Seniors, the Senior Minor Repair, it's really going to be that person that is the point person for all of those moving parts, as well as every community is required to have the municipal agent for the elderly, and this really solidifies that.
Will you answer my question on the friendly transfer we just talked about, the elderly tax credit, right? Because there's other referrals there we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
The other thing, and I don't know, you mentioned the agent, so it's interesting, I think, we mentioned Medicare, there is programs out there, like, for example, someone could qualify for Medicare and also Medicaid, called dual-eligibles. I bet most people don't realize that. So, so my question to you is, how does this person, you mentioned who they're going to coordinate, but there's also the private sector that can help them, so many people are paying for supplemental insurance and they're getting killed.
Yes.
Especially at that age. There's other programs out there for them, that if, again, someone, again, not acting as a, you know, a personal agent where they get a commission, but hey, look, this is a good agency, you might want to go over and take a look, you know, I know it's a fine line how we can't reference to anyone, but, I mean, when, so, I mean, I'm sure someone so, I mean, I'm sure someone's going to tell you, I got supplemental insurance, and whatever they're paying for that supplemental insurance, they're getting, they're way overpaying.
Right.
I mean, we're talking about trying to save people money and help them, well, there's Medicare advantage in the individual market through a bunch of, you know, carriers that they can pay tremendous amount, and then get a break on their drugs as well. That's what I envisioned this to be, because again, also, they could qualify for Medicaid, which I know, I mean, no one wants to maybe, it's, but it's still, it's a program that the federal government's reimbursing people for.
Yeah.
Again, we're not taking advantage of the resources that are out there, and that's what I guess, you know, I was hoping that that's where you're going to see this go.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Counselor Sikala?
Thank you. I'm going to support this, but I do want to make a comment, and Carl, I want to, I wish I could quote exactly what you just said, because I think it's really, really important, and it's true. You said that some, I mean, these seniors can go to Courtney's office or something like that, because that's a place that they can get this service, but it can't replace what we can do in town. And I just want to say, that's exactly what the Adult Daycare Center was. We offered that in town, they could have gotten it somewhere else, but it shouldn't have replaced what this town offered.
Counselor Sfarazza?
Cindy, just one more question. I remember when I worked for the department, we were mandated reporters for children, you know, if we found children's health imperiled or something, we were mandated to report it. I seem to recall, we were also mandated on the other end of the spectrum, so if we went to a home and there was an elderly person living where they can't take care of themselves, no food in their refrigerator, we were also mandated to report that. Would this, this person would make home visits and have that same ability? Would she, would he or she not have that?
Yeah, so elder, elder abuse reporting.
Right, and this person would be, fall under that. So, there's another advantage of going, outsourcing and going to the home and talking to these folks, rather than, you know, having them having to go to a certain place, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
And what we anticipate, Mayor, as we do with all things, we're going to add this position, because we believe there's a need, and then Cindy's going to track it once we hire the new person, and we'll look at it, at it in a year, and see exactly, how many seniors did we help? Kasia at UConn was an expert in doing questionnaires, I fully want us to talk to the seniors, and she'll develop a, a program and a questionnaire to say, did you find this useful? Let's get feedback. And if it's tremendously successful, then obviously we'll continue it. If Cindy, because she's looking at our whole department this year and the organizational structure, Gina had asked Lasher on the budget, do you think we need a deputy director? So, we're having her look at that, we're looking at consolidation of some other departments and maybe having a number two, because this is one of our largest departments, employs, you know, many, many of our employees, but also there's very sensitive work with youth, with infants, with child, across the gambit, so we want to make sure that we're properly staffing it and that we have redundancy. So, we're looking at all those things, and then next year we'll give you a report, and we'll give you the report card on Varner's, how this is going, if we think changes should be made, we'll recommend them.
Anything else?
That's it.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sfarazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
That's eleven in favor and none against, no abstentions.
Get the next one on the agenda, too? Yeah. Item G, request to transfer funds for social services salaries of $27,999. Resolve in accordance with chapter six, section eight F of the town charter, the following transfers hereby made to neighborhood community services of $27,990, from adult daycare of $27,990. Certified that the above funds are available on February 11, 2020 by John Wilcox and approved by Chris, Christopher Bronson, the town manager.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Riley. This is just to follow up to what we just passed. Roll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sfarazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
It's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item H of the, under miscellaneous, request to transfer funds for public safety of $24,155 and 97 cents. Resolve that the finance director is authorized to carry forward the unspent funds from the distracted driving grant fiscal year, from the distracted driver grant fiscal year 2019, 2020 appropriations, revenue and expenditure accounts in org code 25006130 into the next fiscal year until all monies are spent. Date submitted on January 28, 2020 by the town manager.
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller.
Second.
By Counselor Mangini. Welcome, sir.
This is Sergeant, Sergeant Meyer, he heads up our traffic division. We thought it's appropriate, we do this grant every year, but I think it's important for new councils and our residents to know about these grants and what we're doing with them, instead of just saying we do it every year and pass it away. I think it's important to know these enforcement programs, because they save lives. Sergeant?
You have the floor, sir, welcome.
Great, thank you. Sergeant Meyer, with the traffic division of the police department. So, each year, the Department of Transportation, through their highway safety office, they review all of the crash data statistics for each town, and they analyze different areas in ways that they can break down federal money and then pass it out to towns. So, one of the categories is distracted driving, and they've identified Enfield as an agency that could benefit from grant money for distracted driving enforcement, texting and driving, cell phones, all kinds of different stuff. So, they've identified us, we applied for the grant, and we got approved for up to $25,000 in grant funds. We submitted a grant for just under that, $24,000, whatever the transfer amount there, and, yeah, basically, we're looking to go, go forward with that. Happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Sfarazza?
Counselor Mangini?
How are you, Sergeant Meyer?
Good, how are you, sir?
Good. You know, we've been involved with speed enforcement, seatbelt enforcement grants for many, many years, and in fact, the police department, almost on an annual basis, we go for the annual wins awards in terms of those. So, that translates that when we want to apply for grant money to help with DUI, we, we're looked upon pretty favorably by the state compared to some other towns, correct? Would you say that?
We are, yep. Actually, we get quite a few grants from the state. There's, distracted driving specifically, there were some towns that we do work with that were actually cut out of this grant.
Correct.
Performance-wise.
So, I think that speaks to the fact of the, the officers out on the street, making stops when they need to make those stops. The state analyzes that through the University of Connecticut, the traffic office, and what it, the dividends it pays to the town, and I know some people have a version to grants, because they say, well, it's other, but if we didn't apply for this and other towns did, some towns were denied, we weren't, and we are now going to be able to provide for our residents in enforcement, because distracted driving is becoming the number-one reason for fatalities, right? People distracted, and it worked for speed, it works for seatbelts, and I'm proud of the fact that our department is awarded this every year, was thought so highly. I can't even imagine, I was just trying to think of the equipment our department has received over the years through DOT, and if I'm not mistaken, I think our command vehicle was an example of that, and was that a quarter of a million dollars? Matt, do you remember?
Oh, yeah.
It was a quarter of a million dollars that our taxpayers in Enfield didn't pay. I know you say the other state, but there are plenty of other towns that were willing to take that money, so it's not an automatic, you apply, you get it, you have to be held in high esteem, and I congratulate the department for, for pursuing this.
And just to add, it is a 100% reimbursable grant, so there's no cost to the town. It's reimbursed twice, once in May and once in August or September. It will span two fiscal years, just due to the fact that it follows the state fiscal year.
And we'll keep you posted, because each year, the Department of Transportation does recognize departments in different categories. Usually each year we are there, placing number one or two in categories such as cellphone use or DUI enforcement, so we're making our roads safer. And Matt, can you just take one moment and explain, because it's one of the specialized units, again, new council people and our residents, the Metro Traffic Squad, of which we're a member, can you just explain who, what member towns are joined with us in that, what the purpose is, and what different enforcement actions we're able to do, because we are part of that, and the money we receive, in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, which, otherwise we wouldn't be eligible, and we wouldn't be able to afford to do on our own? Just for a brief moment.
So, we partner with Vernon, East Windsor, South Windsor, Glastonbury, Manchester, and Coventry, I think I got them all there, and that's the Metro Traffic Services. There's an enforcement aspect to that, and we all kind of share grant resources through all these different traffic safety grants, so we'll travel to their town, they'll travel to our town, whereas some of the towns, smaller towns in this area, couldn't staff a DUI checkpoint or distracted driving checkpoint as well. Once you get the resources from other towns, you're able to staff it adequately and really make an impact. But there's the enforcement and the things, and then there's the crash reconstruction and the things, and again, we all share resources and training and networking and, you know, all the benefits that come along with it, but...
Thank you.
Counselor Mangini?
Yes. Thank you for staying the whole night here.
Absolutely.
To have you do that. This looks like a win-win situation for the town. There's no cost to the town, but my question is, maybe town manager can explain better, but is this a two-year grant? And also, why are we transferring the money if it's a grant?
Sergeant Meyer, can you answer that better than I?
So, the way I understand it, there's, we're not funding it out of town funds, it's money that's going to be reimbursed later, so there's no account existing, it wasn't budgeted for, so there's no money currently sitting anywhere for us to draw from. So, we got to transfer the money in.
Oh, I see, okay, okay.
And then it gets later, we'll get reimbursed through the state. And the reason why it's, it's happening over the course of two fiscal years, it is a one-year grant, but due to the state fiscal year, starting in October 1st, I believe.
Do you go by fiscal years?
They go by the state fiscal year, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Sfarazza?
Sergeant Meyer, to become a traffic reconstructionist, what type, is that just a normal police academy and a week of training to get that? What do you have to do to become a reconstructionist?
Once you get into the division, there's three different phases, you know, basic, advanced, and crash reconstructionist. It's, each course is 80 hours, so a total of, what is that, 240? And you got to successfully pass tests each one of those things, it's a whole bunch of mathematics and calculations of speeds and skids and speed losses and all that kind of different stuff. So, that's just to get you to be a minimal crash reconstructionist, then you get into all the specialty schools of motorcycles and pedestrians and poles and...
So, the bottom line is, once you achieve that fourth level, you could testify in court as an expert?
Sure.
Okay? So, so people, this is for the public, do most departments have at least one or two traffic reconstructionists?
They may have one or two, yeah.
A town our size, we have how many?
We have four.
Four. And the fact that, in the middle of the night, we may have a serious crash, and we need assistance from other towns, and we call it our metro partners, because we help them, do they charge us money to come here?
Nope.
They don't. So, we receive services from other departments, and in turn, we would send our officers to help them. So, by doing that, we're getting the best investigation possible at the lowest possible cost.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor Mueller? I just had a quick question out of curiosity, do we write the grants ourself? Do you write them?
We do, yeah.
You do, all of them?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just curious, is the money, is the money more for checkpoints, or do we actually do some sort of public, you know, safety concern, like, you know, for kids, they're not text and drive, those sort of things?
So, DOT sets the parameters for all these grants, the specific one, it's similar to a checkpoint style. You'll have a spotter who will call in violations to officers down the road, and then they also usually want some kind of a media push associated with that, like Facebook posts and things like that, just to make awareness and...
All right, yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir, for sticking around. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sfarazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
That's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Item I under, just under miscellaneous, the resolution to authorize the carry-forward of unspent funds for the distracted driving grant, resolve in accordance with chapter six, section eight F of the town charter, the following transfers hereby made to the distracted driving enforcement program of $24,155 and 97 cents, from the distracted driver enforcement program of $24,155, excuse me, and 97 cents. Certified that the above funds are available on January 28, 2020 by John Wilcox, our Director of Finance, and approved by our town manager, Chris Bronson.
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Mangini. I think we just discussed, but any questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sfarazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
It's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item J, under miscellaneous, request transfer funds from Public Works for the pickleball courts of $36,349. Resolve in accordance with chapter six, section eight F of the town charter, the following transfers hereby made, from the general fund, from general fund of $36,349, to the capital non-recurring fund of $36,349. Certified that the above funds are available on February 11, 2020 by John Wilcox, our Director of Finance, and approved by Chris Bronson, our town manager.
So moved.
By Counselor Mueller, second by Counselor Riley. I mean, pretty, I mean, I don't know if you have any color, but I think it's somewhat, John, I don't...
I'm available for any questions, if there are any. The leisure subcommittee met and was in favor of pursuing this, so...
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
I guess this is something that we've been working on for three years. When we first started it, it started because we had pickleball players, or we have a lot of pickleball players at the South Road tennis courts. The tennis courts were slated to be resurfaced and the cracks filled, and in the interim, we had community support that this be converted to an actual pickleball facilities. With that, we've put them on the facilities, these, so that if, if people want to reserve these courts, they can be reserved once they're done, and it's sort of a three-year thing that will be the pickleball courts hopefully on South Road, having pickleball at the annex and at the Angelo La Mania Center, and double striping the courts out at Fermi's. The pickleball has a lower net, the only lower net will be at the South Road complex. So, this is something that everybody plays, but it seems that seniors have the most time to play. So, hopefully that keeps our community active and doing the things that people do today.
Counselor Sikala?
Thanks, just a couple of questions. And Kasia, I don't know if you know the answer to this, or Donna, maybe you do, whoever's on the leisure committee, is the, I guess, the attendance and the participation in pickleball the same now as it was three years ago?
It seems to be as high, if not higher, and I think it's actually spreading now to, from the seniors to the...
Trickling down.
Yeah, it's trickling down, and it's across the country. I mean, when I travel, I'm amazed at how many people play pickleball.
And I admittedly don't really know anything about pickleball.
Well, maybe we'll go sometime, we'll find out.
That one sport, that one sport, I don't know anything about, but the, I mean, doing these courts, I'm assuming it's just like the design of the courts, it's not really going to prevent that court from being used for something else, should that need arise. It's not changing any specific landscape, we're just talking about striping and...
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, ten years down the road, and nobody's playing pickleball, we'll come out there and pull those nets and do a little something different. But we will get six courts on the, at the South Road. And the, the ones out at the Annex will be, when they're resurfaced, if NCAA allows it, they will be double striped, so you can play tennis or pickleball.
Awesome, thank you.
So, the money's to buy pickles?
No pickles!
I'm against this, then. Any other questions?
You'll have pickles for dinner!
Roll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselors Farazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sakala?
Four.
Counselor Hamler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner? Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
So, eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Member, moving on to item K under miscellaneous, resolution authorizing the Town Manager to sign the amendment to the agreement with Construction Solutions Group. Whereas the Construction Solutions Group LLC in the town of Enfield executed an agreement on August twentieth, two thousand nineteen, to perform owner's representative services in connection with design and construction of JFK Middle School State Project. And whereas Section Ten, Section D dot dash, excuse me, dot, period dot, four dot of the agreement requires professional liability coverage with a minimum of five million per claim, five million annual aggregate. And whereas Construction Solutions Group LLC is requesting the amount of this coverage be reduced to a million per claim, million annual aggregate. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Enfield Town Council authorized Town Manager to sign the amendment to the agreement with Construction Solutions Group LLC revisiting the, revising the insurance provisions prepared by the Town Manager on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty. So, move. By Counsel Mueller, seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Well, this was requested, my understanding, and John Wilcox can come up, for an amendment by, um, the Building Committee. So, I, I had thought somebody was gonna be here to make the presentation, excuse me? So, basically, we request a legal opinion because the background information was, we went out to RFP on it, um, we requested five million in liability, the contract provided for five million in liability, and now, we're a little bit down the road, and they've requested... My understanding was due to financial constraints, or restraints, or cost of getting five million, that it wasn't necessary, so they, they asked us to reduce it to one. Under the contract that you approved and authorized me to sign, I'm authorized to sign for changes, amendments. John and I felt, though, given the magnitude of it, I wasn't comfortable doing that without counsel imprimatur to say, "Yeah, go ahead." So, we asked for legal opinion. They said legally, we have the right to do it, and we have discretion to do it, which is important, because you move down the road in a contract, if conditions change, and you need to continue with the, with the contract, you need to have this ability to pivot or to make amendments. But I, I'm not the proponent of it, so unless somebody is here from the Building Committee, or somebody wants to speak as to what the merits are, then I think we table it and wait till the next meeting, because it was asked of us by the Building Committee, and it's not something I'm the proponent of.
Counselor Mueller.
I guess Chris Cyclis here as well, from Construction Solutions Group.
Well, if you wanna bring him up, if he's the one requesting it, and it's to his benefit to have it reduced, then he should speak to you and ask.
Welcome.
Hello.
How you doing?
So, yes, we did request that the professional liability insurance limit be, umbrella limit be reduced to a million dollars. The million dollars is the standard for what the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services requires for our services. The five million dollar limit was just simply an oversight. We saw that the, uh, the umbrella limit was five million dollars, um, in the RFP, but when we went through our contract signing, uh, we were then told by our insurance agent that the umbrella policy does not cover the professional liability umbrella. So, the professional liability umbrella is what we're asking to be reduced to the state standard of a million dollars and not five million dollars.
Any question? Counselor Farazza?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, my question for our Town Attorney, I'm okay with this, but I'd like to hear from you, because the RFP said one thing, now we're changing it, so what is the legal opinion on this?
Sure. Yes, Counselors Farazza, you have in your packet a two-page legal opinion we signed January twenty-seven. We researched this, as long as the amendment is in writing, which it is, it's our determination that it can be amended. Now, anybody can then try to challenge this, but we have case law, including a case in which the town of Enfield was a defendant, where a losing bidder challenged a subsequent bid change, and in that case, they didn't have standing. So, I, I feel pretty comfortable at this point that if you were to make this change, it would be enforceable.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
You know, I guess sometimes we put, you know, requirements, and I, in my former life, I used to see it all the time, and, you know, there was always a lot of discussion as to, you know, what's, what's reasonable and what, you know, the industry standard. And the industry standard for the work that, that they do would be the one million. You know, the five million, it's, it's just, it's, it's not, it's not, not what we would normally see. And I, and in cases like that, you would normally see that, you know, the owner would have, would normally have to carry that as a reimbursable for having something that's beyond the, the limit of expectation for that debt category. So, I'll support it.
My, my question, though, so, so I, I do RFPs in a different, different world, so if it's a state standard that is a million dollars, why didn't a bidder say that in their response, saying, you know, "I know you have the option to have some flexibility in your response," saying, "Five million, the cost is X, but hey, per state standard, it shouldn't be a million, and cost is Y." And maybe you, this provision shouldn't have been, needs to be re-looked at. And so, I'm saying, in our world, we would make that recommendation. So, curious if that came, you know, during the RFP process, maybe why wasn't that kind of, you know, as the bidder, or one of the bidders, that probably would have been an issue, I think, when you bid initially? So, I guess, curious the thought process there.
It was just an oversight with the, with the use of, of the word umbrella, is really what it came down to. We assumed, we have a five million dollar excess umbrelity, uh, excess umbrella insurance policy, but that umbrella does not carry over on the professional liability, and that's, we figured that the, we had the five million dollar umbrella covered. And in fact, our insurance agent said that those are two separate policies. So, the professional liability umbrella, you'd have to, you'd have to actually carry a separate policy for, which we do for a million, just not for five million.
So, curious, did all the bids come in at five million? You, you guys are...
Probably not.
I, I, actually, honestly, I'd like, I would like to hear someone from the committee explain this to me, because I get a little nervous when RFPs...
Well, and Mike, or Mr. Mayor, John's here, and he did check with our broker to see what, and obviously, five million is five times a million. And I know those on the committee, five million isn't five times a million? I guess I fail math, then. But, the point is, John and I fell, and with the Town Attorney's Office, to maintain the integrity of the bidding system, as long as it's done, open and in public, and there's a discussion as to why we're comfortable with it, so we're not gonna oppose it. What we didn't want is a bidder looks and says it was five million, five million in the contract, why on earth, in the dead of night, was it reduced to a million? So, I, I don't oppose it, I don't believe John does, John? No. But we wanted it done in public, for the explanation to be there, so everybody could, you know, keep their head up, and if, if you're questioned as to why, this is why. And actually, I think it's good, under, we need to have discretion to do amendments in a contract, otherwise, our hands are tied in circumstances where in the future, we might need to do it. And if it's gonna do an undue burden, that they, in good faith, thought that they were covered, and they weren't, and now financially, what if he had to withdraw from the contract, and we gotta start from scratch now? So, I'm not saying I oppose it, I'm just saying we wanted to do it publicly. I don't feel comfortable making an amendment of that size without the consent and permission.
The five million general umbrella, that covers, so what's the difference between the two liabilities? What's the million covering, what's the five million cover?
The, the million is the professional liability.
So, what is, what is, I mean, so, in theory...
If, if we had a license and we were signing off on things, if we were an engineer or an architect, um...
Errors and...
Errors and omissions, right, right. We don't have those licenses, we don't have that ability to sign off on that, therefore, our liability is just not that high.
And so, this was an oversight by both the bidder and the, the select, the committee? Is that what we're hearing? Just, I, I have to admit, I struggle a bit, because I, I do RFPs in my business.
Right, and again, it was, the RFP just said that you, you needed, the insurance requirement was a five million dollar professional umbrella.
Folks took as the...
So, we, because we have a five million dollar umbrella, we thought that the umbrella carried, covers both policies. In fact, it does not. A general, a general excess umbrella does not cover professional liability. It's a, it's a standalone policy, and we have both. The umbrella of five million just doesn't cover the, the professional liability.
And, you know, Mr. Mayor, I hate to be deferring to the person that's asking for the waiver, so I would like John to come up, our Finance Director, so he can confirm this, not to doubt you, Chris, but I think it's important that we let the independent town employee responsible for the oversight concur with your analysis.
So, Counselor Sakala first, and Counselor Mangini.
I just want you to put on the record, then, that we're not losing any coverage by reducing this, is that what you're saying? We're just, we're gonna have the same coverage, we're reducing it to a million instead of five million, because it's not necessary to have five million. We're not losing any insurance coverage, so people need to not freak out about that.
And again, not to point this out, but we haven't seen a five million dollar professional liability umbrella on an RFP for our services, ever.
Good question, thank you. Counselor Mangini.
Yeah, I mean, again, this is really confusing. I understand umbrella versus professional liability. What I don't understand is per claim? I, I mean, seriously, a million per claim, or now we're looking at five million per claim for professional liability? How could that even be possible? How, how could one present a claim for five million period, or even for one million period? What kind of a claim? I mean, I've had claims adjusted for twenty-five years, I've never seen...
It's, it's not a claim adjustment, it's, right, it's for errors, it's for some sort of...
This is per claim.
Right, but the claim means, so if they make them...
Errors and omissions claim.
Right, errors and emissions.
Oh, errors and omissions, doesn't say E and O, just says per claim, okay.
The policy and the certificate aren't specific to E and O either, it just says claim. It says per, per occurrence or per, or per claim.
Alright, so how do we know it's E and O? Coverage. How, how does the town know that it's referring to errors and omissions? I mean, is this just an understanding, or, I, I don't get it.
If I may, the resolution says, speaks specifically to professional liability coverage and reducing that liability limit from five to a million.
Professional liability is E and O.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, I just wanna make sure that the town, again, like Councilman Sakala said, isn't gonna be at a loss, either financially or coverage-wise. That, that would be, you know, a big gamble, and I wouldn't support that. Okay, thank you.
Well, I think the larger issue is to make sure, John, that we're following, there's an amendment, the rules of the RFP, that's what I, in my opinion, that's the only thing I'm worried, again, because we, we go out to bid, and then we do it the right way, that's the only question I need answered.
Yeah, so that's why we defer to the Town Attorney, to make sure that we couldn't, that it was, you know, legally, we were able to do that.
Good, and we're doing it in public.
That's correct, yes.
Okay, I, again, I appreciate that, because that's exactly how it should be done. So, thank you. Counselor Farazza.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the legality of it, based on what Mr. Talbot said. I'm comfortable that it's being done, like the mayor said, in accordance with RFP. My question is, and maybe it's not necessary, but did we consult with our insurance people to say, is that, are you happy, is our, are our insurance people okay with this?
Yes, we did. And the response was that, um, the owner's rep was not in a position to be making those types of determinate, those types of decisions. They would expect it more out of the architect, or something like that, some position like that, rather than the owner's rep.
Okay.
And they were comfortable with the...
They were comfortable, okay.
Counselor Bosco.
Did this already go out to bid?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, Joe.
It has, so it's already been bid. How many bidders were there?
I'd have to get the, uh...
A little joke, can you answer that question?
Well, are we gonna send an amendment out to this bid to see if someone's gonna drop their price if we drop the...
Then we would start over on the project.
But that's what I'm saying, I mean, you know, it's...
That's why we're doing it in public.
Right, but it doesn't matter, I, I still, if I was the one that had a bid out, and then I found out, I could drop my price by three thousand dollars, because I didn't have to buy a, a, a policy, I wouldn't be happy.
Any other questions? Any other concerns? You guys, anything else from your end? Roll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Farazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco? Counselor Sakala?
Four.
Counselor Hamler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner? Mayor Ludwig?
Against.
So, we have nine in favor, two against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item L, thank you, gentlemen. Item L, resolution to create the honorary position of poet laureate of the town of Enfield. Whereas, poetry tells the history of human feeling, and can sustain the emotional memory of a community while allowing us to perceive our experience with greater richness and complexity. Whereas, poetry can carry us to the frontiers of linguist, okay, you guys are gonna challenge me, linguistic imagination, so we can, linguistic imagination, so we can articulate our vision of the future. And whereas, knowledge of poetry, poetic traditions allow us to allow, allow us to know more about our culture, and can, and can serve as a passport to cultures of others. Whereas, the Enfield Culture and Arts Commission has developed policies and procedures for the selection of the holder of the honorary position. Whereas, the Enfield Cultural and Arts Commission is hereby authorized to coordinate the selection of the poet laureate for the town of Enfield. Whereas, the position is voluntary in nature, and should, and such honorary positions shall not be considered as being an employee, nor an elected official of the town of Enfield, Connecticut. And as such, cannot legally bind or obligate the town in transactions with others. Whereas, two members of the Town Council and one staff liaison of the town's, of the town's employment will serve as the municipal representatives to provide guidance to the members of the Enfield Culture and Arts Commission as necessary. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the future Enfield poet laureates shall be appointed by the Enfield Culture and Arts Commission for a term of two years, and be approved by the Enfield Town Council. Be it further resolved, the honorary position of poet laureate is hereby acknowledged by the Town Council of the town of Enfield, submitted by the Town Manager's Office on February fourth, two thousand twenty. By Counsel Mangini?
Second.
By Counsel Riley. Welcome, I hope I did a good job. You guys were challenging me with some, uh, with some linguistic words there. Welcome, just name and title, and you have the floor.
Chairman of Enfield Culture and Arts. Emily Clifford, a general member of the...
Is your, sorry, your mic on?
Do I have this? Put a red button, I'm surprised I haven't hit it already. Basically, what we are trying to do, through Sustainable Connecticut, municipalities can voluntarily put in an application to be part of that community, and that would open us up for different grants, where we can use to develop economic growth, equity in Enfield. Through this application process, there's different areas that we have to meet certain criteria. There is a arts and cultures section, so Enfield Culture and Arts Commission has started working towards fulfilling those requirements, if the municipality decides to move forward and become part of this community. One of these programs is the poet laureate. With the poet laureate, what we are asking is for the Town Council to let us do the homework, let us do the legwork. We've put together an application process for anybody who is interested. As of right now, we know that there is one town resident, Elizabeth Suzak, who is interested in it, and we're gonna go through the application process, decide who meets the criteria best, and who represent Enfield the best, and then present that individual to the Town Council for final approval. And it would just be one more step closer to being part of this overall process and part of Sustainable Connecticut.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Just briefly, and we've worked on this, this is something that Counselor Suzak really believed in, and we waited till we fully upped to staff on it, because it's a worthy endeavor for many reasons, and Kasia's been heading it up for us. So, I thought maybe we should just give you just a thumbnail of what the Sustainable Connecticut is, why it's important, and what, how well-positioned we are to attain some good status in the state for all our past efforts, and this is part of it, but this is a piece of the puzzle. I think it's good to know what the final picture will look like.
So, good evening. So, our Sustainable CT Internal Committee has been meeting on a monthly basis. We divided up the work to look at all the different spectrums across the town, and this includes anything from housing to arts, Public Works is very highly involved, just all over, all different aspects. So, by next month, we are hoping to compile our point totals, and we are very confident that we'll be able to achieve bronze accreditation. Our early application deadline is around April at some point, so we hope to be able to present to the council by around May or so.
Awesome. Any questions from anyone? Counsel, uh, Hamler.
I just have a comment.
Sorry, Bill, you're next, sorry, Bill. Sorry, Bill.
Thank you for hanging out for two and a half hours.
I'm going to go home and figure out what pickleball is.
Doing a great job. I'm, I'm the liaison in their committee, and they have lots of great ideas. I'm very excited about it. They're going to bring arts into Thompsonville and Enfield in general, and it's good stuff. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, Counselor Kiner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are really very fortunate in this town to have such a vibrant cultural arts commission, fostering the arts as you do, and you do an incredible job. And I would say that this poet laureate position is certainly a win-win situation. It's not going to cost the town anything, and this person, her objective, or whoever the poet laureate will be, they will be working with schools, libraries, other communities of poet laureates, again, to foster culture and to foster poetry in our community. Things are a very worthwhile endeavor, and I would certainly hope that we all support this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Sorry. Counselor Mangini?
Thank you. I definitely will be supporting this. You know, arts, culture, poetry, I remember years ago, there used to be Connecticut Writers' League. I don't know if it's still in existence, but I was a member, and I have written poetry. But to Counselor Minkiner's point, to bring this into the schools and to bring it out into our community, I think it's great. So, thank you for your efforts.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Yeah, great job with the sustain, CT sustainable. It's created, we're going to be bronze status. I mean, I think it's good stuff. And wish you the best. I mean, and also, I mean, culture and arts is also part of economic development. It's another thing that people don't give culture and arts, you know, helps develop your community economically, socially, spiritually. So, again, I, I don't know what the criteria is, but we wish whoever the first poet laureate is very much luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for hanging in there. Roll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sfrazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four. Four.
Counselor Sikala? Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Four.
Counselor Hemler? Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Four.
Counselor Kiner? Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig? That's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Four.
That's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item N, discussing resolution authorizing the town manager to apply for Moving on to item N, N under miscellaneous, discussion, discussion resolution authorizing the town manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the United States Naval the Connecticut State opioid response. Whereas, whereas Amplify Inc. has provided a grant opportunity for the youth and family Criminal Investigative Service. Whereas, the United States Naval Criminal Investigative Service, also known as NCIS, services division, and whereas youth and family service division is in the process has implemented and oversees a law enforcement information sharing initiative known as of submitting a grant application to Amplify Inc. for the Connecticut State opioid response the Northeast Law Enforcement Information Exchange, Northeast Linux. community mini-grant. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the town manager authorized to sign and submit the And whereas, access to this information sharing system will be available to the Enfield Police grant application, subject to review, approval of the town attorney, in a name on behalf of the town of Enfield with Amplify Inc. and to fix the corporate seal, submitted on Department as an aspect of the department's upcoming conversation, conversion over to February 6th, 2020 by Cynthia Guerrero, Guerrero, Director of Social Services. the next-gen CAD-RMS system. And whereas, information available through this system is limited to legally shareable
So moved.
The Counselor Mangini, second by Counselor Mueller. information amongst eligible law enforcement agencies.
No, just briefly, it's a $5,000 grant.
This information may be used for official law enforcement purposes only.
Again, it's part of the war on the front to combat opioids.
Whereas, this agreement is terminable at any time upon the mutual agreement of both
It's a collaborative effort with the Connecticut Department of Mental Health and Addiction
parties, and is terminable under 30 days' notice, within 30 days' notice by any, any
Services, Youth and Family Services, and also actual implementation.
one party. Whereas, the Enfield Police Department has been invited to enter into, into this Northeast
Youth and Family Services will work with the Rotary and Alliance Club to help promote
links, Linux information exchange system.
safe storage of medication. So, it's a worthy cause, and again, it's $5,000 grant.
Now, therefore, be it resolved, the town council authorized the town manager to enter Any discussion? into this memorandum of understanding and furtherance of this information sharing system. Here, an unroll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Date prepared on February 7th, 2020 by the police department.
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
By Counsel Mueller, second by Counsel Mangini.
Counselor Sfrazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
I can't add too much more, but as you see, as the hour grows late, staff grows thin,
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
and I'm left to do this lifting. But, no, it's a worthy, it's a worthy endeavor because of our transition to the next-gen system of communication and software, we're now eligible to receive this. The chief recommends it, much like the last meeting MOU did with the Secret Service. It gives us beneficial information. It's a little sexy and like the TV show, NCIS, that's what this is. It lists all the other police departments that have been invited to participate. The chief thinks it's worthy, there's no cost to us, and I recommend that we enter into the agreement. Again, as the chief has said in the past, and our, our former chief, these collaborative efforts with the federal government are very beneficial to us. We derive a lot of assistance and information at no cost, information and resources that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do on our own.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Sfrazza?
Just real quickly, Chris, what you said is, you know, especially at a time when there's certain places in our country now where law enforcement is being frowned upon for cooperating with federal authorities, whether it be Secret Service, FBI, it all helps keep our community safe, so I support it.
Any other comment?
And I'd just like to say, Mayor, you know, these relationships and networking are important. The U.S. supervisory FBI agent, Brian Turner, who came here, whom we became friendly with and was a good friend to Enfield, has now been promoted to be a deputy director of the FBI and will be going to Washington. That's a nice friend to have. So, these relationships are important.
Any questions or concerns? Here, an unroll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sfrazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
That's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item M, discussion resolution authorizing the town manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the United States Naval Criminal Investigative Service. Whereas, the United States Naval Criminal Investigative Service, also known as NCIS, has implemented and oversees a law enforcement information sharing initiative known as the Northeast Law Enforcement Information Exchange, Northeast Linux. And whereas, access to this information sharing system will be available to the Enfield Police Department as an aspect of the department's upcoming conversation, conversion over to the next-gen CAD-RMS system. And whereas, information available through this system is limited to legally shareable information amongst eligible law enforcement agencies, this information may be used for official law enforcement purposes only. Whereas, this agreement is terminable at any time upon the mutual agreement of both parties, and is terminable under 30 days' notice, within 30 days' notice by any, any one party. Whereas, the Enfield Police Department has been invited to enter into, into this Northeast links, Linux information exchange system. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the town council authorized the town manager to enter into this memorandum of understanding and furtherance of this information sharing system. Date prepared on February 7th, 2020 by the police department. By Counsel Mueller, second by Counsel Mangini.
I can't add too much more, but as you see, as the hour grows late, staff grows thin, and I'm left to do this lifting. But, no, it's a worthy, it's a worthy endeavor because of our transition to the next-gen system of communication and software, we're now eligible to receive this. The chief recommends it, much like the last meeting MOU did with the Secret Service. It gives us beneficial information. It's a little sexy and like the TV show, NCIS, that's what this is. It lists all the other police departments that have been invited to participate. The chief thinks it's worthy, there's no cost to us, and I recommend that we enter into the agreement. Again, as the chief has said in the past, and our, our former chief, these collaborative efforts with the federal government are very beneficial to us. We derive a lot of assistance and information at no cost, information and resources that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do on our own.
Any questions or comments? Counselor Sfrazza?
Just real quickly, Chris, what you said is, you know, especially at a time when there's certain places in our country now where law enforcement is being frowned upon for cooperating with federal authorities, whether it be Secret Service, FBI, it all helps keep our community safe, so I support it.
Any other comment?
And I'd just like to say, Mayor, you know, these relationships and networking are important. The U.S. supervisory FBI agent, Brian Turner, who came here, whom we became friendly with and was a good friend to Enfield, has now been promoted to be a deputy director of the FBI and will be going to Washington. That's a nice friend to have. So, these relationships are important.
Any questions or concerns? Here, an unroll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sfrazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
That's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item Q, the resolution amending the town council resolution number 4472 regarding the joint facilities committee. Sorry, how do we get there? Where's the next resolution? All right, sorry. Whereas, the town council adopted resolution number 4472 establishing the permanent joint facilities committee, also known as the committee. Whereas, resolution number 4472 established the membership and appointment criteria establishing committee setup of 12 members. Whereas, the town council desires to amend the criteria for appointments to the committee. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the town council appoint four of its members to the committee, and that the four town council members of the committee, two shall be members of the majority political party, then seated in the council, and two shall be members of the minority political party, then seated in the town council. Be it further resolved, board education appoint four of its members to the committee, and that of the four board members, board of education members on the committee, two shall be members of the majority political party, then seated on the board of education, two shall be members of the minority political party, then seated on the board of education. Be it further resolved, the majority political party, then seated on the town council, appoint two electors to the committee, and that the minority party with the most members in the council, predominant minority party, appoint one electorate to the committee. Be it further resolved, that the majority political party, then seated on the board of education, appoint one electorate committee. Be it further resolved, that all of the provisions of resolution 44, number 4472 shall be remain in full force and effect, prepared by the town attorney on February 7th, 2020.
So moved.
By Counsel Mueller?
Second.
By Counsel Mangini. Any questions? Counsel Mangini?
I just want to compliment Deputy Mayor Suzak. I know she worked very hard on this, and thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Here, an unroll call, please.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Counselor Mueller?
Four.
Counselor Riley?
Four.
Counselor Sfrazza?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak?
Four.
Counselor Ungar?
Four.
Counselor Bosco?
Four.
Counselor Sikala?
Four.
Counselor Hemler?
Four.
Counselor Kiner?
Four.
Mayor Ludwig?
Four.
That's eleven in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Moving on to item 16, public communications. I don't like to speak for the public this time. Bob. Address, Bob, sorry.
When I come up here with, with some facts, and then I can't defend them, because some people get, think it's negative. It's not negative. My, my real question is, why does Enfield need more police officers than the other towns? Well, Carl, you said, well, they're first responders. I'll give you an example. One morning, I heard, heard the sirens, and I see an EMT coming down into our apartment complex, so I waited to see what happened. There were the first responders, the MS. Second responder was the Enfield Fire Department. I says, Carl Sfrazza keeps saying they're first responders, and the, and the chief says they're first responders. Well, five minutes later, one cruiser shows up. Five minutes after that, another cruiser shows up. Well, they don't need them, so finally, they leave. My daughter, we work in Wallingford. My daughter went to work, she went to the Cumberland Farms in Wallingford, locked her keys in the car, called me, "Dad, what do I do?" I says, "Well, I'll call AAA." She, she doesn't, she now, now she has AAA. She says, "It's going to take an hour and a half before they get here and open the door." I says, "Well, I'll get in the car, I'll be down, I'll be down there in 35 minutes." I just get to Hartford, she calls me, she says, "Dad, I called the Wallingford Police Department. Within two minutes, they're over there, they open the door." So, they provide the service. All these departments provide the services. I've been, I've been coming to Enfield and worked in Enfield since 1957. I've never seen a list of all the services that the police department provide. And that should be published, all, all the services they provide. This other, this other bogus number, 60,000, come into Enfield every day, that's a bogus number. There's no such statistic. Shelton says they got 70,000, and they got, and they got 45 less police officers. They do publish the commuter in and out, but we got a lot of jobs in Enfield, so it's a wash. We don't get more people. The mall is in shambles. 9,000 stores close a year. Pier 1's closing, what, was it 450? They're closing two distribution warehouses. And of course, everybody says it's the internet, people buying online is causing it. But I just read an essay, only, that's only 11% of the problems. They go into the other reasons. The big box stores are sucking up all, all the sales. So, when I come up here with, with a comment, with facts, some of you people take it as a negative. You, you have to, you have to give a list of the reasons why Enfield's a better place, and I haven't seen it. Chris, you do a great job. You're probably the best town manager we ever had. We neglect history in Enfield. We don't do our history. We don't know who the past town managers, we don't know where the past town council people were. We have, we have a plaque that's got misspellings, not up to date. We have to, we have to get our history. So, everybody says Enfield's a great place, but we don't produce it. Milford puts their sports hall of fame in the, in the town hall, the pictures. We don't do that. We don't honor the people that, that made Enfield great. Thank you. And I don't appreciate everybody getting upset with me, because I'm trying to be positive. I'm pointing out the negatives, but you take the negatives as a negative.
Anyone else like to speak for the council? Karen.
You're right, Joey. We do agree on many things. And, and you know I've got a beef with bidding processes here in town, and, and that's why we don't get a lot of contractors. Karen will plant 166 North Maple Street. So, a bid gets put out, it should be what it is. It doesn't, shouldn't change after the fact. If you're going to change it, you should rebid it, because it's unfair to everybody that's bid it. They bid it based on that number, and if these guys didn't understand they didn't have it, then they should get it and, and eat the cost. But going back to the fire protection, now that you believe it's a dead issue, you talked about uncollected taxes that the town had to eat. Well, I'm looking at the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June 30th, 2019, and it shows for the past three years, fire taxes. It says there's $283,000 in uncollected taxes for the fire for June 30th, 2019. Of that, it looks like 79, is that thousand? Yeah, 79,000 is late fees, which the town collects. I don't believe the fire department gets any of that, so you're getting your 18% if you ever collect it. The town was paid $1,030,756 over the past three years to collect that money. And basically, if you take out these fees, they netted 826,756 from the fire departments to basically do electronic filing. So, I don't think the town's losing money on this deal. It's the taxpayers that are losing the money.
Anyone else like to speak for the council? Bob.
Last school board meeting adopted their budget, and one of the members who was on the finance committee had reservations, says, "I, I want, I want to hold off on it." He said, "I'm not comfortable with it." Well, they went ahead with it anyways, even though he wasn't comfortable with it. When, when we went to one high school, there wasn't one layoff. All the administrators went over. We're 38th out of 169 towns as far as administrative costs, and number one is the highest, 38. I have the list. I have the numbers. We're staffed, we're staffed for 7,000 students, we have less than 5,000. When are we going to make some cuts? The 15 to 35 population was like this, now it's like this. That affects the police department. They need less police officers. When, when you had 45,000, you had young people, those are the 80, commit, 80% of the crime. So, we have, we should be looking at all of these numbers and get right-sized the town. We're overstaffed in the schools, and we're overstaffed in the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Anyone else? Declare public communications closed. Any council communications? Counselor Bosco?
Bob, you misunderstood what I said. If you're doing statistics, that would be one that you should do, to see what each town increases during the day. I wasn't, I'm not taking it as a, an insult from you, but if you're going to do that, you might as well figure out what that's happening too, so we maybe get a better idea.
Chris, just, real quick, all right.
Just a clarification. When I was referring to first responder, the first medical entity that arrives is not the first responder at all. That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about OEMS recognizes the town of Enfield Police Department as the first medical responders. Doesn't mean they get there first. In other towns, that's not the case.
So, Chris, real quick, Deb, Deb did drop off everyone the budget schedule?
Yes.
So, what does she want? Or is there any, I mean, you want to make sure everyone, we don't run into any issues this year, so?
Well, please look at it and get back to it as soon as possible. We did expand some other dates for deliberation for both presentation. Again, we're going to do a main Saturday for, a main Saturday for most of the larger departments. Some will just report, last year, we didn't have smaller ones reporting, but we did put some dates in. Likewise, for deliberation, we're going to do a Saturday. Sometimes people like Joe can't attend, so we're going to also try to film them this year, so that then you could watch it. And then we did put a couple of dates after, during the week, so that if there's some deliberations that we need during the week, we couldn't do it all on a Saturday. We don't want you to feel that you're rushed. So, look at it and try to get back. We're never going to get a...
Send your concerns to Deb.
We're not going to get 100%.
So, it's okay to let you know if there's a Saturday that's bad?
Right. And it'll be the, it'll be the...
We're going to have to be flex, we're going to have to be flexible on Saturdays.
Yeah. Right. Joey, we're going to film...
We're going to be flexible on Saturdays, because last year, we went into this and we...
That's why we're going to film it, so that if people can't be there, they can watch it. And also, remember, we've got weekends of Easter and some other, people have games, but...
We can't not have Saturday meetings during the budget. I'm sorry, we have to have them. I mean, so hopefully, there's enough where folks can make them. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Well, second by Counselor Sfrazza. Good night, everyone. Have a good night. All right.